Somebody give me a thumbs up when Holden lets us know it's live.
You're good. We are live.
Welcome. Welcome to our monthly Committee of the Whole meeting. It is Tuesday, September 8th. It is 4:33 and we are the Duluth Public Schools ISD 709. And it is our Committee of the Whole meeting. This is a meeting where presentations, information, dialogue, conversations are shared with our board members and with our public. We are meeting tonight at the United Healthcare Center and we'll livestream our meeting or we'll video, we'll put our meeting up on YouTube by the end of tonight or tomorrow for our community to see. So I'm going to turn it over to member Clerk Oswald for roll.
Member Eater, present. Member Kirby is excused. Member Lachter Kent is excused. Chair Lofal.
Here.
Member Oswald, hey, look at me, I'm here. Member Sadowski, here. Member Sandel.
Present.
Superintendent Magus.
Here.
Assistant Superintendent Bonds.
Present.
Finance Director Simone Zunich.
Here.
Our HR Director is excused as is Board Secretary Pickett, but Board Secretary Carroll is here, yay. And our student reps are excused. We have a forum.
Thanks Clerk Oswald. And then at Committee of the Whole, we always, or a lot always, but we allow or ask Assistant Superintendent Bonds to introduce the variety of presentations that we have tonight. So Assistant Superintendent Bonds.
Thank you Chair Lofal. And we will begin quickly because we have a robust agenda and we're going to start our presentation off with a strategic planning update, which is item 3B1. And we have Dr. Ray Queener here, who is the COO and Principal Consultant. I'll turn it over to Mr. Queener for the strategic planning update.
Thank you. Thank you, board members, for the opportunity to be with you. I think this is our second update, formal update. We've done a couple informal connections as part of our work through the process. But tonight it was a, the intent is to share with the board and also public about where we're at with our strategic planning process, our classroom to boardroom process, and then where are we going in terms of some key next steps? Can I get my clicker? So, a quick review, I know you've seen the overview of the classroom to boardroom process, a quick update on the work completed. I know you've also seen some reports, so we'll just touch on those briefly. We want to spend a little bit of time talking about the desired daily experience, the data that we've collected so far, how we are continuing to engage the stakeholders around those experiences. And I'll talk more about why that's so vital to the process. I did a quick update on where we're at with our stakeholder engagement survey. We're in the middle of that, and so I've got numbers to share with you tonight. Key next steps and timeline. And then also wanted to just kind of set the framework for where do we go post-planning? And so we've got a visual that I'll start and then I know Superintendent Magus will chime in as well. But how do we think about our work when we move forward from multiple levels of leadership? So, and then we'll give you 30 to 40 seconds for questions at the end. Just to say, I always do to see if anybody's listening, right? So, again, you've seen this graphic multiple times. We're going to touch on some of the details. But I want to point your attention to the right-hand side. What's new from the graphic that you have not seen are the dates. So, over the course of the summer, we met with the executive planning team for organizing and mapping out the rest of our work. I think all we had on there last spring was the April and May dates plus the desired daily experience. So now those dates are mapped out. And I have some additional detail that we'll talk about shortly. Again, the process is designed to be what we call an up-and-out process. So that's why it's classroom to boardroom versus down and in. And so we've started at the classroom level, at the employee level, and we're working our way up the graphic, ultimately culminating with work with the school board around the strategic roadmap, and then also some board structures and design work. A couple of things that we did that was unique, actually it was an idea that the team came up with was to have some community engagement. That wasn't part of our normal practice. So now, that was a great idea and it actually was very fruitful for information that we got from some of the community groups. And so we'll share some of that. But that is, that gray green box on the right-hand side is reflection of that. So we've done Storywall, we've done environmental scan. Next Thursday, we kick off our building and department, kick off the year where they're building and department streets and needs, and then some of our other work. What dates are not on that graphic are the two additional board and public updates. We have scheduled December 6th for an update on the process. And then February 28th will be an update. And that'll be one of our last actions or activities that we do with planning. And then February 13th is not on the previous slide. That is slated right now to be part of the school and department improvement plans and action cards. So how do we, how do we go from an operational plan to actually implementation? So we take the teams through that. I spent a lot of time, not a lot, I spent a fair amount of time with folks at the district about how we merge and bring in together all of the work that has been done to date with school improvement plans, some of the other activities that are going on. So we have a true vertically aligned system. We're not working from different plans, excuse me. So we don't, you know, different goals, different plans. This is all one system. And then lastly, as I've told you multiple times, we do end up with a plan at the end of this process. But more importantly, it's a system of planning that continually is updated. It has flexibility to allow you to be able to make adjustments, and we recommend you do. But the nice part is you don't come back in three to five years and start a grieving process again. This should, if continue to keep updated, it should be the last time you have to do an episodic planning process, which saves time and also finances to do that. I know this is a little small on the screen. I know you have a copy of this in the work. One of the things we've done since we first started in Duluth is organize the process around the three levels of authority that we've talked about. And we've talked about education, leadership system, governance, management, and consultation. And you'll note in that blue circle, again, the words are a little small, but most of our work to date has been in the consultation authority area. So that's where we're asking folks to tell us about the history of the district and Storywall, our environmental scan of kind of where things are at, and a lot of time in the desired daily experiences. So as we move through the process, we'll shift up. And is that light brown, the top circle, the management?
Gray.
Light gray?
Mm-hmm.
So I, the light colors for me, and I get a little mixed up. So you just demonstrated the level of my color blindness. That would be our next phase where we are working on a vision card, a theory of action, our operational plan. And then ultimately, we'll wrap around to the orange circle and with governance, and that's where we'll do the roadmap with mission, vision, core values, the district if we're doing long-range planning, and then the three-year board agenda. And for Duluth, the board is already engaged in that conversation around the three-year agenda. So for us, at the end of the process, it's going to be refinement. We don't have to create it. So the team has actually done a lot of work around planning from operational plans, action card trainings that will help accelerate our work and not have to duplicate that as we move through the process. So before I move on, questions so far on process? Wonderings?
And I was just going to suggest to Assistant Superintendent Bonds to really do the questions and watch for board members that might want to ask a question since it's hard for me to see that.
No problem.
I would, I would just comment. I know we've talked with board, talked with the public about our state identification as a district that will be participating in the one-plan process with the state due to, you know, not meeting standard with a number of our schools. That's something that a number of districts are engaged in. And in particular, districts that have a large number of historically underserved students didn't perform as well, surprisingly, and also, or not so surprisingly in some ways. And the pandemic did not make things better for those students. So that identification process has come to light. We were talking about having a meeting next Tuesday to go into greater detail with that. But we're actually having our orientation process to that. That work with the state won't be taking place until September 27th. So we felt that it would be not as cohesive and not as well-informed to try and present on things that haven't been totally shared with us yet. But I think it's important to note that when we think about one plan, both the plans from the state with the world's best workforce and achievement and integration plans and the other plans being woven together, we want to make sure that our district strategic plan also is weaving those threads together. There shouldn't be our strategic plan and then the state strategic plan. We need to make sure that they're cohesive and work together. But that will be subject for a meeting in October rather than in September because we wanted to make sure that we had a chance to gather and get that information from the state. Any questions on that?
Seeing no questions.
So one of the things that I wanted to highlight again, and then we'll dive into data, is this process that we do is focused on continuous improvement. And that's the system of continual planning that we talk about. And in the spirit of that, it's also, I think, important for the board and public to know that even at TeamWorks, everything we do is, it's not off the shelf. It gets customized and evolves. And we have really adapted our model a couple of different times now. I highlighted one about community engagement from what the team has done at Duluth Public Schools. Adele has done an exceptional job on the communication front with the website design. And we're pointing clients to Duluth's website as a model. The community engagement, I know John was with me when we did those sessions. That was another, I think, a true asset to the process. So we're learning right along with you and evolving our systems as well. And I just want you to be aware that that's been a great partnership for both TeamWorks, myself, and the district. So moving forward, a little bit of the data. I know you saw the Storywall report. This is where we had 60-plus people in a room. And we went back to 1993 was the person with that level of experience in the district and built a timeline around the room from 1993 to present day. And we did that in five different groupings. And so there's a quick snapshot on the screen, but that was part of that 1993 to 2004 report. It is a multi-page report that tells the history of the district, the highlights, the key activities. But the more important part, that's interesting. People usually learn a lot about what's happened in the district doing the Storywall. But we wanted to take a look at, so what were the big events? And we had teams identify that, and that's the third column on the chart. What behaviors were existing in that time that were rewarded or encouraged? And then looking collectively across those time periods, what's the, what are the characteristics of success and the characteristics of challenge? And then highlighting what lifecycle phase the district was in at that time. The reason that we do this assessment is we want to carry this forward as part of our awareness when we plan. So if we recognize the characteristics of success, we want to replicate that. And we want to avoid the challenges, so we look for those characteristics. So the assessment part of this moves forward. The other part is just rich data. We have had districts that actually use some of the Storywall work in talking about the history of the district. And it was no different in Duluth than other districts. There were people in the room that didn't know some of the things that happened in the late 90s and why, or the impact. The second thing that we did was the environmental scan. What we take out of the environmental scan are trends and influences. Again, the higher-level analytic portion of it. We categorize the assessment in four areas. Edge, emerging, established, and I'm blanking on the name.
Ebbing.
Ebbing, thank you. Way to be ahead. And so what we do is we categorize the things that were on edge and emerging, and we talk about what were the key trends and influences. So we collected a lot of data and then boiled it down to these key trends and influences. Student-staff increasing social-emotional needs. That was there in districts before, but now even more prevalent as a result of the pandemic. Societal influences and political landscape, that's shifted, that impact district direction. The divide across the district, that's something that continues to be a trend and influence. Continual evolution of student options and performance. So kids get more and more options all the time. And then changing employment trends. Even this week, they're still talking about the impact of the employment trends, not only around schools, but in the state of Minnesota with our unemployment numbers so low. Established and ebbing, thank you Kelly. Student choice and shifting approaches to school programming. That's a trend and influence of those two categories. The divide with the community based on political landscape. So we've seen that shift through a lot of school districts and communities. Challenges with current and future resources. Again, in school districts, it's not unknown that generally we have infinite need and finite resources. And it's always a challenge trying to balance that. And then the employment challenges also were impacting what was established and what was ebbing in the school district. So again, a lot of data, you've seen this report before, but we want to highlight those trends and influences. And then next, we're going to shift to the desired daily experiences. A little bit about how we got here. We started out April 25th with focus groups with all three areas, students, families, and staff. And the community, four community groups were in there. Between April 25th and May 16th, it was a fun but very aggressive timeline. For the students, we had eight different groups of students. Four at the middle schools, two at R.D. East, two at Lincoln Park, and then four at the high school, two at East and two at Dunfeld. About 125 students participated. And again, we've got a rich dataset from that, from their experiences. And we'll talk about them in a minute, their desired experiences. The family groups, we had a little bit less participation than probably desired. We had about 30 parents that were represented from all the different areas, early childhood, elementary, secondary, the EEAC group as well. And if we were planning from that data alone, we probably would have paused and went back out. But because we were taking the draft data back out to the entire population, we felt that even though that sample size was a little bit smaller than we wanted, we're going to get a much broader response. And the numbers are proving true. So people are reacting to the desired daily experiences. I've not dove into the data to see any kind of statistical analysis, like are these resonating, are there omissions? But anyway, we're in a good place. We had 45 staff members participate, both licensed and non-licensed. Community engagement, over the four sessions, about 45 people participated. There was some duplication in those groups. We had staff, we had parents in there. But we also had community members that participated as well. Must be right in the edge of my clicker range here. So we did that, each of the middle schools and each of the high schools were our four sessions. So you had a chance to hopefully take a look at the students' desired daily experiences. I'm not going to read them to you unless you'd like me to. But I think that I was sharing with John that as I've done this work from fall of 19 through last spring, there's been a significant shift in student responses. And I really noticed that with the students at Duluth. Fall 19, students were focused on a lot of conversation around academics, course offerings, homework, a lot of academic focus. And when I was with the Duluth students, I started to see the shift to more of the social desire. Middle school students always want longer lunches. That wasn't atypical. But there was lots of conversation for how they could be engaged with their peers. And so we saw some of that in the student-desired-daily-experiences language. Lunch period not only meets their interest from a menu choice, but also from a time of being able to be with friends and get connected. So as you read these and looked at them, was there anything that surprised you at the board table about these draft statements that came forward? Or any interesting ahas or insights that you would share?
I think for me, I'm not surprised that middle school students or any students were interested more in the social time. I mean, just coming out of a pandemic, feeling really isolated. I mean, that was my kids' favorite time. And just to have, you know, unfortunately, I know behavior issues sometimes get in the way. And then they have to have assigned seats or they had to have assigned seats for morbid reasons, myriad of reasons. But that was not surprising at the time, so.
I think number eight is important. I think that's what we're all really looking for, right? Students make mistakes and they know it, but are they treated fairly?
Yeah, but I'll just chime in too with just looking at number six. I'm glad it appears there. But I think sometimes from my experiences that I think I don't always remember that students are really looking for that believe-in-me. And how do teachers show up in the classroom with that, you know, kind of philosophy and vision? We all do, but I was surprised that the kids really are asking for that. Pretty smart kids.
I would say it did take quite a bit of time to distill all the input into these drafts. And so some of this is, and also sometimes we're taking negative state, we were trying to state things in the positive too. So rather than say, you know, I don't feel a connection to people and I want to feel that connection, we're stating it as the desired daily experience from that format. But it's, I think it was, it's really edifying to see how engaged the students are in their own learning process and the sense of self-efficacy they have related to their own learning. So that was great to see.
Can I ask a?
Member Sandel. Member Sandel.
Well, I would just like to say that I actually think our teachers and our building administrators are pretty much in tune with this. And I, but I think it's really good to see it in writing or listed like this for all of us to recognize that this is coming from the students. But you know, our staff that are engaging with students every day, I definitely, this is no surprise to them. And they're working with our students, taking all this into consideration on a daily basis.
Yeah. Member Derek, here.
I was just looking back to the students. And I, you know, understand the pitfalls of this, but were there any attempts to talk to our elementary school students about what their desired daily experience is?
We did not. We have had some conversation about if we can find ways to engage elementary students on the draft statements.
Yeah.
The activity was, it's probably not an elementary age-appropriate for what we do with the focus groups. We'd have to find a different way to gather the data. But the team is talking about how could we, and I think they were conversing with elementary principals, how could we reach out and see, you know, maybe even upper elementary, is this resonating with their thinking as well?
And I fully support reaching out to the principals and the administrators. But if we're talking about a desired daily experience for students, I think it's important for those voices. I think it's important that we acknowledge the humanity and agency of our K-12 kids.
Yeah.
And so I get the difficulties of, you know, those groups and stuff. But I would like to see some way that we just recognize that these, that our little followers have some buy-in to these desired daily experiences. That's six years of their education right there.
Yeah.
Member Sandel.
And I think a lot of our, let's go with the third, fourth, and fifth graders probably articulate that pretty well. There's some smart little guys out there and ladies out there. That would, I think, be helpful.
Sure.
And we, it wasn't a large number. We did have some elementary students at the community sessions. So we had parents that brought their whole family, K-12, that were at the table and they were filling out responses as well. So we did have some. But I think the hope is that we can work with the principals to find a way to get in the schools and engage in smaller focus groups or something.
I would really like to see that for our K-12 kids.
Of all the desired daily experience drafting work, this is the hardest because students, students give you data in their voice and then adults sit at the table and try to decipher and come up with statements. So part of our challenge is to make sure we didn't change the voice of the students. So as best we could, we try to represent their language in these statements as well. It's not quite as challenging for the families and the staff. But on this one, I know the student group, we had to constantly say, okay, did the students say that or are we putting adult speak on? So I want the students to be able to see these and see their work in those statements. As an aside, again, the last thing on students, when we did the focus group work, I remember that one group at East and one at Lincoln Park specifically thought this was the coolest thing that they've engaged in in a long time. Number one, they were social. They were in small groups, very social. And number two, they got a chance to just say whatever was on their mind. It was, they really appreciated and enjoyed that opportunity to do that. It did not take any effort to get them engaged. Which as a former middle school teacher, I thought that was very refreshing. So, okay, let's move on to families. As you looked at the 10 statements across families, were there any ahas or surprises from board members as you look at this draft?
I think I can interpret the negative for each, each of the 10 sentences that I believe we have probably all heard from a parent or two in our time on the board. And so I think it reflects what we hear when we get complaints and feel bad, in a very positive way. So I think, I think it's very reflective of what we hear.
And when we met with them, if there was an issue or problem, we had them compose the opt, what did it look like if it was fixed? So we did shift them to the positive frame. Other thoughts? Questions, wonderings?
Again, I think just, just a thought would be that, like Member Oswald said, these 10 statements should really be a focus for board members to kind of keep back, coming back to. Because these are concerns that are not new necessarily. I'm glad that we gave our parents the opportunity. I wish we'd have more than maybe the 30. I wish we'd have more than maybe the thirty or so, but it's, 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 it's good. They, they represent a lot. I don't know if we, even if we had, you know, double this or triple this amount, I, I think these ten statements would reflect what our community, families, parents really want their daily experience for their child to be. And as board members, I just, as this board member anyway, I just wanted to say, you know, one, I appreciate this, this, this plan that allows us to be reminded. It's not like, you know, board members, we, we've known these, but it's good to have it in front of us again. So these ten statements certainly are ones that parents want, teachers want, and, and we as a district want to be the daily experience as, to the, as much as we can.
All right, we'll look at staff. Again, ten draft statements for staff. Asked the same question, any surprises or ahas or wonderings or questions as you read through those?
I think number four about communication is one of the most varied things among our district that I think we, it goes with the saying that you can never have enough communication. Some people's style of communication don't mesh with the receivers. Others, you know, think if you say it once, you should know it. And others say it fourteen times and you get eye rolls because, you know, we heard it already, like talking about something else. And so coming up with, with some norm and standards on that is, is going to be tough. And I think that's just something you need to strive for always.
Yeah, I think, I think there's a couple in there like that, Alana. I think the clear and timely communication may be different. You know, you have a different interpretation than I. I'm always clear and timely, right?
Sure you are.
And I think the other one that we see when we talk about the word support. Because it, it means different things to different staff members to, to feel supported. Right? So I think we may have some additional work as we try to articulate those, we develop the plans. But for right now, that was the, kind of the gist of the, the data that we had collected.
Could I jump in again? Can you, Ray, can you tell me again when, when we got these groups together? Was this last late, late winter, early spring?
Between April twenty-fifth and May sixteen.
Okay, that's good. And again, I, again, I, I think I, we, we've been on this process of strategic plan for a while, but boy, you know, how much do you think of all of the focus groups that we heard? Do you feel it's an all, all different because of the pandemic and the, the challenges that we all faced? Or with my years in, in, in the classroom, I, I realized that all of these daily experiences, whether it's coming from the kids, coming from the parents or coming from the teachers, is, is pretty much what I would think is our big, big, big points to look at. But are we thinking as a district that any of this is, is more, you know, just heightened because of, of the pandemic? And is that, and, but again, I don't want to make excuses. This is what we need to address is we want these rich daily experiences.
Yeah, I, I tried my best to remind them that we don't want to develop a multi-year plan around a pandemic that's, we're moving out of. Did it impact some of it? I think probably a little bit for sure. I noticed it with the kids. But, you know, if, if there was a communication challenge during the pandemic that was only there for one year, we don't want to develop a communication plan for something that might never happen again. And so we, I tried to reinforce that. But yeah, there, there, there most likely will be elements in here, but it's not heavily dominated by pandemic. And surveying the, the groups now will, we're, you know, I don't know if we're officially in the endemic phase of it or not, but it feels like we're getting there. They'll have a different mindset giving feedback this fall.
And I think that's, that's something to, that's important for all of us to remember is like sometimes when we hear, you know, there were eight different meetings, but we only had forty-five people show or thirty people show it through those, that, that's still, this is just the first draft. And now the next phase is to really seek much broader input on that. So to have thirty or forty-five people put together a comprehensive draft of what they're feeling and thinking, and then we put it out to a larger audience, I think it gives us more opportunity to get more voice. But I think as, as member Derek Eater mentioned, trying to make sure that we have exclusive voice of our, our K fives or at least the older elementary students to get their feedback would be good.
I mean, I know kindergartners eat glue and do all that funny stuff, but they also have a pretty keen sense of, you know.
As I watched our kinders come in for the first time today and in a number of our schools, I saw some really, really great, beautiful, bright students coming in. And I also saw some great instruction of our kindergarten teachers teaching the protocol to those students about sitting and listening and dancing.
But I do want to second what the member Derek Eaters is referring to because as, having been an elementary principal and a father, I mean, two young ladies, I mean, they will tell you if they feel like the teacher likes them. They will communicate if they feel like they have friends. They will communicate if they're feeling like, you know, things aren't going well in the classroom. So even our young scholars, they have a voice and we do need to figure out how we're going to listen to those voices. So what can I be with that? In the process.
And I was, I was in a backup member eater with the K-two crowd because that's where I'm heavily focused. And I know that every one of those kids can describe what they like about school, what they don't like about school, what they think they should be learning, what they, what they know they're doing that they probably shouldn't. I mean, they all can articulate that. And I think that, that may be where that input lies because you want to do more of what they, what they like and what they expect than, and steer them away from those other things that aren't as broad.
And to Ray's point, the how.
The how.
The how, get it, in an effective way that can be useful. That's a challenge. Members sandal.
Yeah, before we move on, I guess I just wanted to highlight number ten. That teachers and staff have a voice and opportunity to participate in this, to make a process with colleagues and administration. Because I'll hearken back to my industry days in the eighties in the semiconductor industry when the big book out, quality was free, was handed out to, to all of us and formed quality circles. And, and just how things coming from the bottom up can turn things around for a company, for a corporation. Carly Davidson is one of the big examples, there's others out there. And, and so that's important that we recognize that the participation of our teachers and our staff at all levels, parents, can help us succeed as we move forward with the things that we want to, and the changes we want to make here.
And I think, I mean, pretty typical in many districts, folks want to know my role. They want to know that my opinion's been heard and considered, but they're okay not having to have made the decision. They just want to be a part of the process of how, how does my input get valued and considered in the, in the work? And so we, we've actually already started talking about tools that, that help do that.
And to that point, Mr. Bonds and Director Larven, several others of us have participated in that NEA training today on collaborative schools. And they brought up two different frameworks. One was the six pillars of, of instructional need of progress from the NEA perspective. And the other was the four pillars or whatever, columns of, of focus from the Institute for Educational Leadership. And both of them call out that the educators need to have a strong role in decision-making, leadership and input. So if there are multiple entities saying it and then we're hearing it again here, I think it's important for us to recognize that. I know that we've done, done a lot of work this summer on, on the labor management process and will continue that work as well. That's one mechanism of, of input. And I think there are, as we'll see from our presentation, there are multiple mechanisms, partly through labor management, partly through teacher focus groups, partly for, through just surveys and asking. But we got to, we got to figure out like many different ways of doing it. And I think labor management is one of the strongest.
And we do have some good things in place already, P O Ts, Q S Cs. And, and those are kind of your quality circle groups. But, you know, how do we expand those and or just help them be as effective or constructive as possible?
Wouldn't you agree?
Okay, process, next steps. Next, Thursday, we're, we're up doing building department strings and needs. So another data collection activity. We will do the desired data experience revision on October sixth. There is still a, a little bit of conversation about a potential need for reaching out to another group after that. But though you see there'll be another opportunity to update the desired daily experiences after that October sixth date. Because it's such an important driver of the planning, we want to make sure that we have all voices heard and, and engaged. As I already mentioned, the survey to stakeholders is out, almost a month-long window. And as of this morning, we had a hundred and thirty-eight student responses, four hundred and fifty-eight family and two hundred and eighty-two staff. And I know that we have multiple plans still for outreach, for awareness. A postcard will be going out with our code on it to have people to be able to take the survey. We also have some outreach plan for other agencies. So we're trying to meet folks where they're at. And then conversation about potential language, alternate language surveys as well. So we've got a nice window to be able to engage in multiple facets. Because I, Superintendent Magus and I have talked multiple times that the goal is to, this one we want to get as much and as wide as we can.
So would it be an opportunity to, through this process, to elevate the voices of families who, just by sheer numbers, their voices could get muted? I mean, is there a way or plan for, to elevate those voices?
In terms of when we're working on the data?
Yes, when we're working on data.
Yeah, and that, and we, we look at that. We have a demographic component on the survey. So we'll be able to sort and categorize surveys to know where, where we're getting information from. So as a planning team, then we'll be looking at, you know, this segment of the population is saying this and not letting it get all blended together. But I'm only hearing something once from maybe one group and more, more times from another group. We want to be able to represent all that.
And I'm bringing it up, I was hoping you would share that because I want to make sure that the community knows that we are really thinking about that and considering how we do that. And we need to be really intentional and explicit on how we're going to go about doing that. Because we don't want to be in a position where they feel like their voices are going to get muted in a survey, you know, where the majority tends to end up having, the majority has the perspective, you know, and their voices feel muted. Member Oswald.
I, I think you've touched on this a little bit, but I'm seeing a huge gap in community input of people that don't have kids in our schools, which is, you know, a significant part of the population in Duluth. And we need their support to pass referendums and, and for money and funding and for them to volunteer and give their time and their energies. And so their input is super important as to how they want to be engaged with us. Is that part of your process somewhere?
So it was, when we did the community focus groups, we asked them questions in a different way. We didn't ask them to describe their desired daily experience because if you're a community member, you may not be having an experience with the district, you know, a direct experience. So we have that data from that standpoint. The decision was made not to survey the community on the desired daily experience statements because that, they didn't provide that data. That, it was from different stakeholders. Once we have the desired daily experiences and we have an operational plan that does the work to deliver on those, we take the whole package back out to everyone and say, here's what we, what our primary stakeholders said, students, families and staff. Here's our plan of work. Here's our vision, mission, core values of the alignment. Give us feedback on the whole plan. And that's a collective, that's everyone, that's community as well as students, families and staff.
And do you typically have a significant portion of the community provide feedback on that? Or is it, or is it typically just a couple?
If we do our job well, we'll get very little feedback. And so far, in my experience, we've gotten very little feedback.
Chair Moford?
So can you explain just a little bit about the fact that now I, I know the window is open for the surveys to go out? And we've just looked at those three groups and their ten statements of desired daily experiences? Is, is the survey asking, asking them to rank those? Or are they asking for ones that, that they, like, are we looking to eliminate some of those statements as we move forward? Or what, what is the survey? I, I know the survey is probably asking them for their feelings about all of these ten statements.
Yeah.
Can you help me out?
It's a super secret survey, so I can't disclose that. No, I'm kidding. We actually asked three different frames of questions. The first question is, when you look at the statements as a collective whole, to what level do you agree with them as a collective? Then we ask individually their level of agreement on individual statements. So now we're, now we're drilling down. And then lastly, we ask them to rank order their, their ten statements so that we know what's most important. Finally, we ask the question, is there anything, anything omitted? Did we miss something? And so we, we look at it from a holistic and individual and then a priority basis and then anything omitted and pull that data back together. The challenge in every one of the questions is to the, to the survey takers, it's big letters that says, note, this is meant to be a desired daily experience in the future, not an evaluation as things are today. And so the challenge for our planning team is to understand when survey respondents are evaluating the statement against the conditions today. And so we'll have a little bit of work there. But did that answer your question?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Member Sadowski, then Superintendent Magus.
Yeah, you just kind of answered, I think, a question that I had before. And I was wondering if these were ranked. Are they ranked now or are these just random?
They're random, they're random.
Right now. Thank you.
What was that?
They're random.
They're random. So I made sure. Superintendent Magus?
Sure, to your point earlier about making sure that we're lifting voices that might be muted through number or, or historically underserved, another thing that we had talked about is, is finding a way of allowing for some review or input from our tribal partners. Because our tribal consultation through the assertive process, through, through instruction in general, that's something that we're trying to improve upon when it comes to concurrence, non-concurrence, when it comes to that annual tribal consultation. We want to have ongoing, ongoing dialogue and partnership with, with the tribes as opposed to perfunctory, once-a-year check-ins to say we didn't do what we were, what we promised we'd do last year. So we are planning to have a mechanism for, for that, that conversation as well.
All right, so a couple other updates. Well, a final draft, although there'll be another opportunity to work on the desired data experience because we will touch it actually three times. On October sixth, we will also do the classroom theory of action. This is a tool that focuses on what are the key behaviors, beliefs and activities that need to occur, but not initiatives. So it's a level of expectations around belief, behaviors and activity that occurs in the classroom. Then we will move to the vision card on the twenty-fifth. The district vision card is a tool that allows administration to monitor the progress of implementation of the plan. It is not meant to be a scorecard or a public report card. It's a tool of management to monitor progress. And then it's a function of the office of the superintendent to provide. And then it's a function of the office of the superintendent to provide a, our language, a monitoring report of how we are doing on our vision card in alignment with our initiatives. And so that's the, the public and board report on progress of the plan. So that'll be the vision card. Then operational plan, we do twice, November 10th and December 1st. This is mapping out the key work that occurs to deliver on the desired daily experiences. And as I already noted, the district has already done some operational planning. Was that a year, John, a year and a half ago already?
Yes.
Year and a half ago, you, you shared a little bit of that at a, at a board retreat last summer.
Actually, one year ago.
One year ago, okay. And so we'll, we'll be grabbing that information and then rolling things forward and adding to the work. And, and there's a couple of the dates, I didn't put the board dates on there, there, January and February. But we, we, we did want to take a look at this last slide as we think about moving forward. So seven, eight months from now, and when we start to look at the work that populates, one of the tools that we use at Teamworks is the leadership level of influence. And there's different components that we engage in with, with, in terms of, you know, specifically governance and management. And our counsel to school boards and administration is there has to be a blend of management work with governance, with the school board, to the degree the board has information and data to make governance decisions. So even though the board is making policy for the district, policy in isolation of what's happening with initiatives and management work would be blind. So we have to have that blend, like your committee of the whole meetings. You are, you're kind of blending management and governance work, and this is the mechanism you do that. Superintendents, both John and Anthony's, one of their roles is, is to make sure the, the organization is ready and the system is ready for change. To dive into an implementation on an initiative is not appropriate. They have to be aware of that, but it's not their work. At the director level, focus on structure and processes. So the systems, and, and a lot of times for directors and even principals, we talk about change readiness is as important as change management. So getting the organization, the systems, the structures in place, getting a building or an apartment ready for a change is as important as managing an implementation tool. At the principal level, we look at practices and oversight. And then, of course, teachers and staff, primary role is implementation and refinement. The refinement is a key piece because even at the policy level, our best-laid plans, when you get to the implementation, may need to be refined, and we have to have the ability to do that. So we talk about these differing levels of influence in a couple of different ways. So for example, the school board needs to be aware of student achievement, but you have no control over it. So for a school board to set a goal of student achievement, it's something that's totally out of your realm of work. So your question would be, what policy needs to be in place to allow student achievement growth? We see sometimes superintendents will have a student achievement goal. It's important, but as a, as a former superintendent, I had no ability to control student achievement. I could control the system and the structures to help set the stage for it, but I didn't have, I wasn't teaching. Right? So that's the diff, that's how we use this level of influence when we do our work post-planning. And this leads into, let me ask, is there any questions on this before we move into Deloitte's model? All right, I get to stop talking, and Superintendent Magus will talk through the Deloitte process.
Jen and others have seen this slide and been part of developing this. When I saw Ray's initial slide, I thought, oh, that looks, that looks really familiar. It looks somewhat similar to the, the slides we've been talking about in our administrative Deloitte leadership team meetings. And so really, we've, we've tried to, to model the board, or the classroom-to-boardroom flow as well because sometimes if it's seen as hierarchical with, you know, school board on top and then everything flowing down, it doesn't, doesn't flow as well. But with this, we see that the students are primary. The students are the ones that we're here for, the students are the ones we're about. PLCs or, or professional learning communities are about how are the teachers working together? That's the mechanism that teachers have to think about, what is their curriculum? How is it being taught? How are the students doing? If the students aren't learning what needs to be learned, what are we doing to, to make sure that we're better serving those students? But then there are site teams, and Tanya has done some great work over the past, and others have done some great work in the past few weeks on rebooting our continuous improvement teams. And those are the school-based site teams that, that do that work at this, at the individual school. Because it's, we could say there's a cookie cutter method for what elementary reading should look like. But each, each context is going to be different. It's going to be a little bit different at Lowell than it is going to be at Laura McArthur. And it's going to be different there than it's going to be at, at Lester, Lester Park. But we also have to have some systemic oversight as well. So, so it's how do you adapt the end goal to the, to the needs and resources and strengths and, and challenges of a site through those processes? And then through the facilitation of Director Larva and Director Sparts, there's an elementary leadership team and a secondary leadership team that work with our principals very closely there. Then that group works with Cabinet, and we have a, a new group that we're working with this year called Cabinet Plus, which is basically our cabinet group, bringing in principals, bringing in other people as needed to examine different things as we're going along. So let's just say we're talking about blended learning. Blended learning is going to be executed through this system, but we need a way to look at it as a system too to see, how are we doing with that blended learning thing that we said we're doing? Is it really taking place? Are there things that we can learn, as, as Paul was saying? Are there things we can learn from the people that are closest to the work? How do we make sure that we're getting that information up into the system so that we're making the right decisions? And then senior leaders is made up of myself, Assistant Superintendent Bonds, Executive Director Zunich, and Executive Director Severance. We, really, our work is kind of helping to facilitate and, and steer the Cabinet, Cabinet Plus group, as well as to work with the school board. And the school board, as we know, is, is responsible for monitoring our, helping monitor our progress, for setting policy, and also for putting resources in place to, to ensure that we're able to do what we say we're going to do as well. Those are some of the needs in place, as well as holding us accountable. And the next slide just goes into greater detail. It kind of looks like a game of Twister, but it's, but it's not. But it shows the, the different types of, where, where's the, the leadership at the different levels? What types of committees or, or groups are working together? What are the sites looking like? And then how are the departments involved? So you see, for example, departments, those departments are, they're not going to the PLCs. They're not working in the schools. That's actually where the, the principals are more involved. But the, the departments are working through Cabinet, they're working through principals, meetings, and they're working through elementary leadership. So really, it kind of, it's, it's the ebb and flow of that earlier slide that Ray showed, where really a lot of my work and a lot of Mr. Bonds' work is, and, and working closely with the board is, how are we going to block, pave, and plow to make sure everybody else can get done what they need to get done?
Yes, Member Sandel.
So this is a flow chart of?
The way we work.
The way we work? And so is that's a flow chart of decision-making? That, I mean, I mean,
So, so I would say,
PLCs to students. I mean, I'll say again, I'm just having a hard time, but I think this is a flow chart of the way we work.
It's a flow chart of our different teams and, and structures. But I would say, we want to, we want to push the decision closest to the people who are, who are most responsible. So if there's, if there, if there is teachers wondering, how should we teach our social studies unit on the Civil War? It would be silly to have, have to have it like reporting all the way through this, this structure. Or if we were trying to decide, how are we going to make sure that, let's just think about device distribution? Like, we want to make sure that we're listening to the principals and listening to the, the teachers and the site teams when we're making that, those decisions. And we're also giving autonomy, so what it's doing is also giving autonomy to the different groups so that the people closest to the, the responsibility for whatever the outcome of the decision is are the ones able to make that decision. So if there's, Jen, maybe you might have an example of, of something from a, from like a principal level?
Oh, from a principal level.
Director level? I'm just, you know, just thinking about other.
So there's, there's things that, that come our way that, oh, I'm trying to think, some, maybe something with, where are we teaching Native American standards or whatever, you know? And so we're doing that as a department, we're analyzing, viewing that, and then we're trying to push that down into our leadership team so that then those can go to the people that are going to be actually implementing standards. Let's see, so it's some decision-making. They're on me. What this is really trying to show is where people are represented in the process, you know, this one here. So we want, we wanted people to see that there's, there's, you know, there's voice, there, there's opportunities to share and learn from each other. I think elementary and secondary leadership is a missing component that we have not had, that things end up going to the labor management side of things when things are something that could be addressed real, real easily. Like things about, I can't even think of some of the, health, like what are they teaching in the puberty talk? You know, that doesn't need to go to labor management, but that's where it has ended up because we haven't had any structures where that could be talked about and addressed. It's, it's just one example of something where we felt like we really needed to have a place where principals and teachers and coordinators and departments at the district level had an opportunity to come together and have discussion about things that are coming up from the classroom and be able to help sooner than having it to have to trickle all the way up to either the labor management or the cabinet or something. So I don't know if that helps.
Member Holf.
How does this, is it similar or different to our organizational chart?
It's similar, very similar, actually, you know.
Or is it?
Sometimes you would flip it and it's like show, and, and there's, there's a little less, like there isn't complete leveling on this. Like, you know, in the organizational chart, you would have, you know, superintendent and have, you know, assistant superintendent and the executive directors, and then there'd be the directors, and then there would be the principals. But what, what this is also trying to do is during COVID, it felt like every single decision had to go all the way up the tree and all the way down the tree. Like, how are the kids going to eat their applesauce? Well, I don't know, like, we have to think about, you know, social distancing and, and what about spoons? And what about, you know, the guidance from MBE? So like, a question like, where do, how do the kids eat their applesauce? It was, it was kind of a, it, it was the opposite of how a normal system should work because sometimes the superintendent was having to decide how the kid, the kid should eat their applesauce. Or maybe I was even asking MBE or asking a group of other superintendents, how are your kids eating their applesauce? That's silly. The, the, the teachers who are closest to the work, we, we want to make sure that we're empowering the people closest to the work to make the greatest amount of decisions for the things that they have responsibility for. Yet, we also sometimes need some freedom within fences, right? Because if we, let's just say, conferences, if, if every school is deciding when and how they're doing conferences, there might be some feelings of inequity or, or difference there. So it's, it's about trying to make sure that, that we give the guardrail, but then we also give a vast amount of autonomy through, for people at the different levels to make the right decisions because they're closest to the work. Does that make sense?
Kind of.
I was at that QSC meeting when we had that puberty talk.
Yes.
And I was like,
Why is this here?
Why am I sitting here? So, yeah, I think this is great.
Great conversations, and are we getting closer? Because like, we have a, a number of other great presentations.
Final questions for planning process, work completed?
When do we, as a board, see you again?
For sure, December 6th. Between now and then, we'll be doing all of the components of the management work. We'll do an update on the 6th, and then you're going to get really tired because we shift to the boardroom for the strategic roadmap review, review of your three-year governance. So from January through March will be a fairly intensive board engagement, all the way through the approval of the part of the plan.
Well, it is winter, we don't have much.
Happy season.
Yeah, we, we also have a workshop planned for October 2nd.
What's up, Jay?
Do you have the data?
Yeah.
That 1/5th?
The second half, but not too late.
A bigger push all the way, it's fast.
Yeah.
Can fit them on our calendar.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Dr. Queen?
Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Shana.
Thank you. Our next agenda item is an update for secondary scheduling.
I'll double-check the data.
It's up there, I found it.
Secondary Director Jen Larva will be presenting that update.
And he told me to be brief.
He just was your PowerPoint.
Well, oopsie, there was a reason why you were given the PowerPoint in advance so that you could really review the work that we're doing as far as the secondary scheduling goes and that you could have some time to really reflect on it. And maybe I don't have to run through every single slide. That's kind of my plan, if that's okay with you. Okay, so I just want to remind you of where we've been a little bit at the beginning here, and then we'll kind of get to nitty-gritty, how does that sound? Okay, so look at what we're showing right away. Dr. Queen would be really impressed. My work is really centered around the desired daily experiences that students and our staff are asking for. She's going to be so happy to see that. I learn from people. So anyways, we did identify as a committee those desired daily experiences that we wanted to schedule to really focus in on. It's not the revised, like, we're taking some of the preliminary stuff. So we'll, we'll get those desired daily experiences down as we learn more about them. But, you know, trying to pull up some of those keywords from the desired daily experience. We really centered our work around that. We also, here's just committee members, you can just see that there's representatives here from lots of different places, lots of different schools, different levels. We did do an activity where we, we prioritized what our work was going to be. I think there's been, there's a lot of confusion about why we're getting back together again. And so, you know, these were the, the foundation of why we were working together to make sure that we were focusing in on the key important things. And you'll see that bullet number four is, allows us to meet the state standards. And that really is the reason why we, we're starting the work. But while we're doing this, what else can we do? Can we provide some flexibility for students? Can we make sure that we still have that PLC time and be able to have win and engage with our students and have those times to build relationships? And then number five, of course, is for the school board, is sustainable. Whatever we do, we want to make sure that it is sustainable moving forward. This is just, again, that reminder about the art standards. I'm not going to read it back to you again, but I want you to make sure that you are aware that there have been changes in the art standards. We used to be banded, and now they are by individual grade levels. And I think that's the big difference moving forward that people have to be aware of. Before, we could say, in seventh and eighth grade, they have to meet these benchmarks. And now it's individual grade levels in seventh grade, and these are the ones, and in eighth grade, these are the ones. Timeline is really important to me, and up here, you can't see the color, but I kind of colored a couple of those ones in there. If you see, we are really tight in time. We start work now, like, like, should have started on August 31st, but we, we pushed back our meeting till after the board meeting with you all to start. but we pushed back our meeting till after the board meeting with you all to start meeting with the content specialist. We have to get changes for course catalogs. This is when we start thinking about 23, like, this is this is the time for it. And so we have to move this along in a way that is thoughtful and quick, kind of at the same time. So a lot of work has been done preliminary and we just want to let you know kind of where we're at right now with things. Um, I did get do some digging into some cost analysis pieces. Um, I felt like it was really hard to to understand moving forward, like, what would curriculum adjustments, like, how do you figure out how much money it would be? So we we did do some um, thinking around that and had some people supporting us with their thoughts around how much it would cost. So if we were creating new courses, if we were doing it nine weeks, this is about how much it would be for a course, a semester, a full year. So you can see those cost analysis, cost analysis there. These are all estimates and I just want you to be aware of that as well as we move forward, okay? All right, middle school. This is really the crux of where a lot of our work has to happen, not necessarily at the high school. Yes, do you have a question?
And and so connecting to that.
Yep.
So this is really where we have to make the decision more immediately. So the high school decision doesn't have to be made. At the same time, we try to move forward and make a decision how we want it.
We need an immediate solution for 23.
Right.
For middle school. We do not need an immediate solution for high school.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, okay. So we're going to run through middle school options. Um, you know, I I tried to give some background about young adolescents and what we really needed to keep in mind about how kids operate when they're in that that pre puberty to puberty stage. And, um, you know, some of the things that they're enthusiastic about, if you have ever seen the Yardstick book, it's a really good book about learning learning benchmarks for kids. And so, I mean, for young kids at home, it's a great book to look at. This is our current middle school course offerings. You can see that in sixth grade, they are either, number six, you can see in sixth grade, they're either taking art or business education. This is where sixth grade is okay. We get to seventh grade and you don't see art because in seventh grade they're taking facts or they're taking industrial technology. In eighth grade, they don't have art either. So this is where in our current course offerings that we have, we need to address the art implementation standards. So we have to do something different than what we are currently doing. Um, you can see down at the bottom that right now we have our music, um, electives down in a box for what what is in grade six and what is in grade seven. In DeLuque Public Schools, all of our music options right now are performing options, they're all performing arts for music. And so that is another thing that this committee really talked a lot about is that not all kids want to be engaged in band and orchestra and choir and what alternatives might we be able to come up with for other kids as well. So those were pieces of conversation that we had. And then you can see the current grade eight electives that we are offering there as well. So we took the work that was done in 2017, 17, right, Brian? I think it was.
Um, yes, I believe that's right.
1617?
Before my time.
Before, yeah, okay. So the previous work that was done um, at the at the request of the school board, there was a committee that had been formed and they had looked at like 32 plan options or something like that. You were on that committee? It was like a lot of plan options that were reviewed at that time.
Exhaustive.
Exhaustive. And it was narrowed down to like four or five, I think, for middle school and high school, okay? So we really just went to those ones that were already whittled down as a starting place and looked at those. You will see that we whittled it down to three potential options that we reviewed. One of them is our current sixth period day with the wheel option, and I'll explain that, what the wheel means. One is the seven period day and then one was a three by five block. Okay, now, three by five block means five periods a day in trimesters. That's where you get the three, okay? So when they say three by five, it moves us from semesters, which we currently have, to trimesters for reporting. So we'll we'll go through that. I did a with or without an AB schedule so that people could really see that, um, that that piece of it. So the wheel period, current with wheel, I explained the wheel. Did you have any questions about what I meant by the wheel after seeing those definitions on there? That they're sometimes forced choice electives and sometimes free choice electives, just based upon what our requirements are. But we're looking at it as being um, in quarters versus, like, right now they have two options, you know, art and business, that's it. We did, we do it in a quarterly basis for them. Yes?
Um, this isn't just a question about the wheel, but about all schedules that I noticed the the Spanish and German go away. Not all options except for a new intro to world language course. Is that the plan, like, that we're not going to offer world languages?
So we're the only district in the area that is offering it at eighth grade and kids are actually earning high school credits in eighth grade where they should be earning their high school credits in high school. Um, and our agreement with UMD is that they have to get to Spanish five. They have to take all way to Spanish five to get that college credit and we're the only district in the area that is doing that. We have done some exploration of options. There is um, potential for us to offer college credit for students at like Spanish three or Spanish four. So we would still be able to get kids to that point of having college credit, which is why it has been currently offered at the middle schools because we have to get them all the way to Spanish five. Um, we also have, since this schedule was put together, I don't know how many years ago, gone to the bilingual seals. And so bilingual skills seals were implemented last year. Kids actually can take a test and get credit that can then be transferred into a Minskew school. And so that's what they still call them, Minskew schools, okay? All the Minskew schools will accept those and then sometimes outside of state, you know, they they will look at it and they can potentially offer them college credit for that proficiency assessment that they're doing in a language. So I'm not saying that it's out of here permanently, but it it is something that has to be on the table because, you know.
Although I I know we have to have to make choices, but I also know that it's it's one of those equity questions of because Lincoln hasn't been able to offer certain or certain world language classes for a while and that automatically means they can't get to get to the five level and and so then you have a bias between schools and and as long as college credit can be worked out.
Yeah.
I I.
And I think that's the end goal. I think that's our end goal, is make sure that kids can get that credit.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Um, so this is just an example of what our wheel could potentially look like if we had it in the six periods. So we would be able to have, and this is just in general, okay? So this is an option where we are still alternating AB days so that we could still continue to have PE throughout the year. You know, when we think about young adolescents and they're coming out of elementary where they have a lot of PE, we want to make sure that they're still having it, not just in a quarter or or in a semester, so trying to still have that balance. We did put a required arts and I have it identified as being music there as performing arts. I think it's really hard to put arts into a quarter or a trimester if it's their first time having an instrument in their hands. You know, that continuity across the year is going to be very important. However, if we were to do like a different type of music elective, I don't know that it would have to be a year round class too. So I mean, there's still things that need to be tweaked and worked out through here. You'll see the required arts two is in there and then we have the explore and the elective ideas and suggestions there. And these are just some of the ideas that have been brainstormed by the committee. I'm not saying this is where we're going with any of them. These are just some of the ideas. Um, so having, you know, facts and industrial tech still in the sixth grade and then business and computers kind of giving them that introductory level and then maybe some expansion when they get to seventh grade and maybe more free choice by the time they get to eighth grade. Knowing though that art is going to have to be the requirement that is consistent all along, but what they get for art could be a choice. Yes?
Do we anticipate having any challenges in finding staff to teach these other kinds of art classes that we may or may not implement? You know, the visuals and the and the music and that sort of stuff.
Our our art teachers that currently are licensed will be easily able to do visual and media. That will be covered under their license. The dance and the theater arts licensure areas will be will be more of a challenge for us to find. We always have the options of having variances. We also have the option, which we have not further explored as a committee, but um, I I guess the Purbridge Center, I've had some connection there a little bit with the Purbridge Center, has stated that, you know, we could actually offer like a three week course, you know, replace the PE for three weeks with dance arts, bring in a person with dance arts and we can cover the benchmarks that way. So that those are options we have not even explored yet and that might be something that we can do, um, you know, like artist artists residencies or something like that. So there are options out there that we just have not fully yet explored. So, but those would be harder to get, yeah. Um, I'm sure you saw some of these pros and this cons, hoping you had a chance to look at the pros and the cons. Were there any things that struck you that you want to comment on or pull out of there with the wheel?
I was kind of wondering, under the cons, and I think we talked, I talked a little bit about this, but does under the cons, it says does not address these desires in case of this. Can you expand on that?
Yes, so the sixth period wheel would not be anything that would be doing for high school. So a high school schedule. So when we were looking at it, you know, if we were to take a look at the wheel, we would say, no, that doesn't work for high school. So that's when we were looking at it, we were looking at it with both middle school and high school. So this one would not be able to be something that we could implement at the high school, just based on how we earn credits.
Chair local?
So, yeah, thanks for for this work and for these ideas and I don't have necessarily any huge observations on our pro con list because there you're pretty exhaustive there. Um, but, you know, one one avenue too. I love the idea that you shared, Jen, about working with the Purbridge Center and maybe bringing in some um, guests and residents and that might be meeting the need of the standard that that would be worth investigating. But with the with the way that we are licensing teachers too through Pelsby's title tiered system, there there are a lot of theater, um, theater majors. They might not always have the teaching license to go with it, but with the the way that we tier, couldn't that be an option for? We have, we have a rich theater community at the universities, both of them, Scholastica and and, um, you know, UMD. So maybe there's some instructors there or also, you know, some some guest things. And of course, I'd really want us to try to see where dance and theater and can can get a a voice there. And then under the possible creation of innovative course electives, I'd like you to really, you know, that that's a great uh, pro for our list and I threw out debate.
Yeah, of course you did.
No bias.
Supported by lots of research and data.
Yeah. Uh, thank you, Jill, for those comments. I do want to state that, um, so when I talked about dance, I threw dance out there. There's a difference between the PE standards for dance and dance arts. And so they're 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 different level of standards and so we just want to make sure that when we're we're engaging people in the license, that we're getting the right license. So there are there are theater arts people in our community, it's a rich community that we can potentially get in, yes. We just have to make sure that we get the right license for them on a variance.
Thank you. Since we're talking about dance, I'll use that as my example. So so when we when we talk about these standards, the cons, standards would need to be prioritized in a nine week elective, so. Elective. So if there's dance standards, can could a student get that in one nine week quarter? Or would two nine week quarters in dance be required to achieve those electives? I mean, I'm trying to follow the schedule here and thinking, are they going to?
There would be no sloth.
So it would be one quarter of dance and then they're going to pick another.
Art.
Art to fill in um, an art standard, get to to achieve an art standard in addition to the required arts.
No, no. So we have, we, okay, so we have to offer three arts, okay? They're required to take two arts. So we can offer music as an art and and I feel like that's one where we already have a lot of licensed teachers.
And when would that music?
That would be one of them.
Student be taking it all year long?
That's where we were talking about the AB day being all year long, especially those performing arts now.
We have students doing that now.
Yeah, if we had um, like a general music type of class, we may not need to do that. So those are things that we still have to flesh out. Um, but we have, music is a possibility. Um, we have a lot of already licensed staff, so that would make sense. We also have our art teachers that we currently have on staff that are visual and media. So right now we can offer three and then figure out how to require the two. So there might be some options for some students, like in seventh grade, they want to take visual arts or media arts. You know, there there could be potentially some different offerings there. Bring in a theater and dance, you know, that I think our immediate solution is to work with what we have and then start expanding out into the theater and into the dance arts as we as we delve into the course catalog and how we have to make changes. Everything that we're talking about here has to have something done with that with curricular wise. If we're moving it to a wheel, we have to take a semester's worth of content and bring it down into nine weeks. I mean, so there's work that needs to be done. I don't see that we're going to be expanding into dance arts and theater arts for 23, 24. Okay?
Okay, so I I would think we have a lot of teachers technically capable and probably already doing some kind of media arts.
Yep.
Are they licensed and can or or would they just be given the standards here, you got to meet these standards for media arts and they would, they could pick that.
Our current arts teachers currently do visual and media.
Right.
And they're, so they can do that.
Could other teachers do that too? I mean, I think that would be something.
We'd have to get the licensures for it. We'd have to look at that licensure piece of it, yeah.
Right, go ahead, please, here. Okay, then.
Okay. All right, um, this is where it's probably pretty interesting for you, is the cost analysis pieces of this, right? So our cost analysis, you know, on staffing, we wouldn't be adding many staff um, to do this. So we're we're thinking it's kind of cost neutral, all right? I don't know, you know, depends on how this really plays out. I don't know if there'll be a reduction. I mean, if we're talking about world language, it's a possibility that we'd be filling in somewhere else differently there. So, you know, it's 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 pretty neutral as far as the staffing costs. We can we could do that with the FT that are just currently given there. Our curriculum adjustments would be a one time cost and it is pretty minimal. Um, we're we're thinking it would be $32,000 to $54,000, somewhere in there. It's a minimal cost. Um, we know for sure that there's 12 affected courses in the middle school course catalog that would need to be adjusted. Right now, we would have to add some potential, I calculated for six because, you know, if we're taking what they're currently doing in facts, we reach nine weeks, we might be splitting that up into two. You know, we we have to play around and see what we've got going on there. Um, but that was just a ballpark estimate. This is probably the most cost effective route to be going. And but it's a short period of time, nine weeks is very short, to get all your standards in for students, it's it's quick.
And we're directed.
Would this, let's just hypothetically say something, we were very interested in Plan A because it's something we could do the implementation well and it would give us one focus area, which are those art standards, which is really where our focus needs to be right now. This would probably allow us to do that and then finish what we're doing with our strategic, not strategic plan, strategic roadmap, right?
Strategic roadmap and operational plan.
And operational plans, right? Then this would allow us maybe, once we have our feet under, to start thinking more strategic between middle and high school to match it back to what we need to do for our roadmap and operational plan, right?
This would be an immediate solution that wouldn't impact, um, it wouldn't impact some decisions further down the line that are happening. I, yeah, that would be an easy way to put it.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, and it would be something that we could probably get our arms around in a way that would be.
Yeah, it might not be um, what optimally people would want to see happen, but it would be an immediate solution.
It would be, okay.
Yeah.
May we ask?
Does this actually limit a person's elective choice? You meant everything would be required?
I would say sixth grade, everything would be required regardless. I think in seventh grade, there's going to be requirements, of course, with art, like they have to take an art, but they could potentially have a choice in what art. We may or may not be like, no, you have to take this because, you know, I don't know, like, let's say facts, they only get to cooking pieces of it. And normally they would have cooking and I don't know what else they teach in fact right now off the top of my head, but they still do sewing. I don't know what they do. I, all I know is that my son didn't learn how to do his. All I know is that my son didn't learn how to do his laundry in middle school. It would have been heck for him. So we have to make sure that they get those basic skills that they need. It might have to be divided into two, once we get those committees together, really take a look at the curriculum and what they're doing. So I see eighth grade as being where more choice would be offered, where sixth grade is going to be really, we want them to explore. We want them to try industrial tech, we want them to try FACS. Seventh grade might be a blend of both, if that makes sense.
Isn't industrial tech required anymore?
So. So our electives are our local control. So we determine industrial tech, we determine FACS. I think business education is also one that's under our local control. Yeah, and rural language, I think, too.
And so, if we're going to be focused later on in high school about, you know, emphasizing, you know, trades and that kind of thing, why would we want to consider not making industrial technology at least mandatory, so everybody has to try?
That's where like sixth grade would come into play. Like, sixth grade, you have to do FACS, you have to do industrial tech, you have to do business, you know, so that they get that first introductory level, yeah.
I was just looking at the wheel playing.
Oh, yeah. And those are things that we're still playing with.
And I guess my whole point of my question was, is, you know, from my perspective, I thought part of redoing schedules was to create more choices. And this actually seems to streamline the choices in your, like, more what's required. And so am I wrong that that's, is that, is that a desire of daily experience for students? Or do they want to be told what to do and be given limited choices?
I was just going to say, from a parent perspective who's had middle schoolers very recently, I think this seems to offer them more choices. Because already, they didn't really have a lot of choice. It was, you know, you have to take, what do they call it? Pre-engineering, which is industrial tech, one semester, and then maybe art. And so what you're saying about sixth grade, have less choice, seventh grade a little bit more, and eighth grade even more, that seems to be how it is now. It's just that now, they don't have these extra art options.
And the point of my question is that I thought, I thought we're supposed to be figuring out how to offer more, not the same or less.
And we're trying to, we're trying to, and this is.
When you have the wheel in there, there's one.
There is more. There's much more, but it's a little bit more.
You can't take more, it's literally, you just can't take more.
Right, that's it there.
Remember, Sam Home was looking to ask a question earlier, are you good?
I'm good. No problem.
If we're ready to move on, we can just briefly touch on the seven-period day. Some people really feel like the seven-period day is our gold standard in this district. That was what we had in the past, and that we made that reduction to go the six-period day. So there's still some real strong feelings out there that we want to get back to the seven-period day. And I'm just communicating what we're hearing from folks, okay? It's a very traditional schedule. In our options for the middle school, right now, on their six-period day, they're in classes together, 49 minutes at the middle school, is that correct, Ryan?
Yes.
Okay, so he's 48 at the high school, so I want to make sure I was correct. So 49 minutes, so this is a reduction then of time in periods in order to make, to make this work. We also have to add, which is where this gets really complicated with the seven-period day. The seven-period day, we really looked at the high school, too, how we could make the seven-period day work, and that's further down in the presentation. But in order to make it work at 44 minutes per day, still have time for win, still have PLC-ing time, so they'd be teaching five out of seven, so they still have time to do some PLC-ing. We end up with an 18-minute add at middle school in order to do this. Now, I had talked with Steve in transportation, and that's opening up transportation contract negotiations and all of that, because it would shift our time, which also shift, I mean, voyage your bus, we contract with them, and they have pretty set times for the schools that they're also contracted with. So just letting you know that a little bit. We talked about this and how we could potentially add more would be Alana here in the seventh-period day. So if you look at the seven-period day, you'll see where the required arts are, and you might see some elective. I did not articulate this one out into music straight out here. If they were to take music, they would be then taking music, like required arts one, and then if they're going to do performing music, they might be taking it both semesters. We haven't played with this enough to do an AB day or anything, but, you know, they might be taking one of their electives to be in a performing arts, music kind of class, to have that continuation through your own. But you can see that business education was here in the sixth grade. We can move these around too, we're not, I mean, this is just playing and drafting things out. In seventh grade, you know, here we still put industrial tech, and we still put FACS in here. It did end up giving them an opportunity for an elective. Again, we have that same thing with music, where if they were in a year-long class, they might have to take their elective as being music. And then again, here, eighth grade would be kind of similar, but they had another elective choice as well. So not adding a ton of electives, but there are some things that we did not explore and play with. I mean, an AB schedule again, so that we could take those musics within that. I mean, there are things that still can be done and played with and worked on if we were to go in that direction. Yes.
Just looking at this with an 18-minute add, students are still done at 3:33. And I know this isn't really the full question, but when I was a middle school principal, we started at 7:45 and were done at 3:20. And that was, without the 18-minute add, our schedule here seems to be considerably shorter than other schedules in other districts, just as far as length of time and length of day. Is that, is that the case? Are we trying, is it partly that we're trying to squeeze everything in a somewhat smaller?
So we're trying to stay within contract language, because we have not negotiated a new contract. So our contract is not going to start being negotiated again for the next round, and a decision has to be made. So that was where we really were. If through kind of contract negotiations, we bought more time, this would then be reexamined to look different. But we were really trying to stay within contract.
But my clarifying question is, our day is considerably shorter than many other school districts. And so I think that that's something we have to wrestle with, too, from a contractual standpoint, from a finance standpoint, and especially with us being identified as a district that doesn't yet meet standard. It's hard, even though seat time doesn't equal learning, we all know that. But I do think we, when we think about the medium range of things we hope to accomplish, we may, we may wish to try to add some time, even though that will be challenging.
Hey, Bronson.
Way long ago, when I was in junior high school here, we started at 7:45 and got done at 2:30, I believe, Mr. Tuscan can remember this, too. And then, high school, we started at 8:10 and got done at 3:20. At some point in the, in the 2010s, I don't know, sometime during the reign of Bronson, we went with best practices before I was on board, anyway, I should say, we were board, and Superintendent Bronson had made the recommendation to flip-flop the start times, making elementary schools earlier and the older kids later, based on best practice and that they should sleep in, and they're more able to take care of themselves and all that kind of stuff. So I don't know how agreeable we are to switching that up at some point in the base of best practice, but I do agree that we should be expanding our school day to accomplish more minutes as I'm going to teach in a while.
And I was, I would actually say, I believe in the research that shows that a later start time for older students is generally beneficial, so I wouldn't argue against that. I'm just, honestly, I mean, honestly, it strikes me, we have a very, very short secondary day.
Remember, Sam Home? I think it should be obvious to all of us here that this is not anything doable in the timeframe we need to do it, with the contract issues that would come into play. And I don't see how, as a district, we could be at the cost of doing this without some kind of referendum to pay for it. So, you know, I think at this point in time, I don't know if we should spend that much more time on this, unless somebody wants to spend more time on this. It would be a topic for somewhere down the road when you look at these long-term strategic plans. And then, actually, that's the other option that might come into play.
But we have to make a decision on middle school, how many art standards sold. We're going to have to decide on how to spend money.
And our goal here was to make sure we considered the various options, knowing that, again, what are our desired daily experiences? What do we want to do programmatically for students to be sure? It's more engaging, more interest for opportunities, as Jen shared, Director Lauer shared earlier in the presentation. So we were trying to accomplish that. So we do have an A, B, and C from the one that we know we could pull off, to one that's middle-range, to one that's more expensive and more desired. But we felt the need to make sure that we presented all the options, knowing that as a district, if we really are trying to improve outcomes for kids, we really need to start considering the things you started mentioning, like how to live for, the things that we truly need to put in place for our kiddos, and how do we accomplish that, given our budget situation, given a lot of things that would take to make that happen. So we're simply just presenting the options, and as you know, nothing has been decided, but that's where we are right now.
Promised to give you an update. I kind of went from what we know to the unknown, which will be the last, or what we have not experienced, I guess. You know, so what we're experiencing now, what we have in the past, and then like an option that potentially we could move forward to. So that's where we're at right now.
Chair local?
So I just want to, you know, just appreciate the work that's gone in, both the 2017 group that, you know, spent a lot of time with Dr. Carey's leadership to, you know, share a lot of information and data and best practice. And, you know, I vacillate from being like overwhelmed with just why the state legislators, you know, mandated something that causes a lot of change, to then the idea that we can't be the only district that one had to add a strain, a strand in middle school and, you know, what our other district's doing. But you guys are the experts, and you've worked hard on this, so, you know, I'm just encouraging us to keep going down this journey. We've got to offer that strand. Would it be, so Jen, when you talk about that we have to offer, they have to take two, but we have to offer three. So what if, what if the, what we, what if what the thing that we add doesn't get anybody to take it? I don't know, you know, you offer it, you can't do that. You have to follow the mandate of, we have three and we're going to be, you know, excited that whatever new art we are offering, or music, or whatever strand, you know, that kids are going to be excited for it. But it just seems like it shouldn't be, you know, this complicated to add that third option, but it is. And it's driving a whole lot, and granted, we've talked for the five years I've been on the board about, you know, how can we structure our days for our daily desired experience and be able to give more opportunities or, you know, just a solid, a solid day of academics needs and Stan.
For some reason, Chair local, please hold, you went out on our end.
Oh, yep, I just saw that, too. So I just was saying thank you and glad that, you know, we have such people that will serve on these committees, because these are all probably staff and teachers that volunteer to give input and share, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and we have been in contact with the art specialist down at MDE, and we've talked a lot about different types of schedules and how other school districts are making it work. And she does say that the most challenging schedule to make it work is the six-period day, and there are other schools out there that are doing that, and they are mostly electing to go into a wheel option, those ones that are maintaining a six-period day. So that is the conversation that we have had with the state specialist for art.
Just one more question. Are we talking at all about either, you know, maybe, I know that what every student needs, the win, is where we hope as a district, our students are getting, you know, more opportunity to, you know, get what they need, go to teachers during that timeframe. Is there any restructuring, maybe a little less time there and add a little bit? I don't know, just any discussion on, I know our district has been also looking at win, which also probably has to play into, you know, at least at the high school structure, at least address it. Do we like it? How can we tweak it? Keep it, not keep it? But that could impact how you restructure that?
Our answer to that would say, yes, all of the above. We've had a lot of conversations regarding each of those bullet points you just mapped out.
Thanks.
Oh, Ms., remember Sam Home?
No. Pros and cons, I know you've read them, I'm trying to keep it brief. But we'll kind of move on, we kind of talked about some of those things here already, so, and I know you know how to read. The cost analysis of this one was challenging for me, to say the least. Okay, the seven-period day is a little bit harder to figure out. In yellow was what had been the reduction from when we moved to a seven-period day to a six-period day. This is the numbers that the group had used in 2017, and what they estimated their cost would be. I also worked in the pink with Simone Zunich about, you know, like, what our current amount of money that we have is, and trying to figure out, like, you know, if they're teaching five out of seven periods at 71% a day versus the five out of six, which is 83% of the student day, like, how much more increase do we have to have to cover? And it came up with 12%. My numbers are somewhere else, like how I actually figured that out. But I did do math, and I'm pretty good at math, so it was good. Anyways, we figured out that there would be additional FTE that would be needed, and so what increasing that would be. So we're kind of in a range there, just depending upon the perspective that we're looking at it. You know, if we were increasing hourly staff as well, that was a concern of the committee. Like, if we're increasing some time, we have to increase those people that are paras. You know, their day wouldn't still end at the same time, they might need 18 more minutes to their day. So we added that 12% there as well, that came up to about $825,000. And then, you know, we don't know some variables there as well and what it would look like. So we were estimating anywhere between $825,000 to pull this off at the minimum to a million and a quarter, and that's just middle school. So it does come with a cost, and that was working with numbers from the group before and then our current group. Now, the last one is that three-by-five, and I have with or without an AB schedule on there. Three-by-five is, again, another standard period type of schedule that you see. The school district that is in our area, I guess, that has a three-by-five would be Moose Lake. And so Principal Katsmirczak had a relationship with the principal there, has, you know, friendship from being in the Carlton County. So he was able to talk with her and really kind of fleshed out how they're doing it at Moose Lake as well. So that kind of helped us craft some of this. So it's more of a local school that we're kind of thinking about. They're much smaller than we are, but there's things that we're considering. By far, this is what the committee would recommend as being what they see as being expanding some possibilities at the middle school level for students. And so, just letting you know that, because it has longer times for building relationships with students. It has, it meets some of those criteria that they have at the beginning. But we'll talk about that as we get a little bit further on here. So these are just some samples of what a B, or without an AB, could look like. What you see here that I need to really talk about is, this is just preliminary drafting stuff, and, you know, not necessarily what we're going to look like, but if we were to take and say, a year's worth of standards is pushed into two trimesters, this is where we could get more choice and freedom in our schedule here, okay? Math, trimester one and trimester two, that would not necessarily be that. A kid could have math in trimester one and then be scheduled again in trimester three, or they could be two and three. So it's very possible that you would have some gaps in there. I mean, you could have a sixth grader who had math trimester one and two, and then they get it until two and three and seventh grade. I mean, there are some variables there. We've also talked about, when you see the AB schedule, I kind of push some things aside saying, eh, math's a priority, we're going to make it a year-long, instead of being in two trimesters. There's things that we can do here. We just have to know what our priorities are and what we think is most important. And I'm uncomfortable with saying, let's have less time in math, based on. And I'm uncomfortable with saying let's have less time in math based on test scores and stuff. We want to make sure that we're giving those kids the time to, to really get deep into those standards. Teaching is a little bit different with middle, a longer period, but it's 11 minutes additional, so it's not, it's not a huge gap. I think, was Moose Lake a lot longer? Were there minutes or were there?
Uh, yeah, there were 60 total.
Okay.
I think there were maybe 60 or 70.
Yeah, I thought it was 75 or something, but maybe I'm wrong.
Not 75.
Not 70? Okay.
I think one of the things to keep in mind when you go through this is we do actually, at the middle school level, we can still have a lot of flexibility with how we set up their schedule. So like math could be a whole year. I think the other thing that is important to note is we're still exploring. Because we've talked a lot about making sure that we can bring reading back into middle school instruction. We don't teach reading in middle school anymore. There's no way in the sixth-grade day that we can. So something like this would allow for a trimester of reading, sort of 12 weeks of reading instruction for sixth graders, which I would be eager to perform.
But that's what you have with A, B.
With A, B, so this is an example of without. Music would be just one trimester, it's not year-round, you know, so they have the two art choices. That really again would be a 12-week period of musics, like orchestra for 12 weeks only would, would be a challenge. And if they had to take their whole year to do orchestra, you know, they're, they're, they're eliminating a lot of electives that they could possibly take if they wanted to make a music choice. So I did craft the, and so you have the pros and cons for that. I took all the cons and kind of tried to work something else, an alternative. And this is one that I then shared with the board, which would allow for performance music to be full-year. It would allow that PE instead of being in one trimester to be stretched throughout the year to give those young bodies that opportunity to move. And then in these scenarios that I was showcasing here, I did prioritize math just because it was less than what we would desire for their achievement scores. We could say the same in many other areas though as well. So I did articulate out what that could look like. And this is where you do see that idea of like a reading strategies class or something where we have that support then for those sixth graders as they're transitioning between, you know, coming out of elementary reading and coming into English. And, and it is a different field and they still have those needs with learning how, learning how to read.
Director Laura, can you do my favorite, go back to the pros and cons for the?
Oh, sorry.
I just want to make sure that if we do have committee members who do watch this, that we at least have covered these pieces for them.
Okay. So, yeah, so that was, we were talking about some of the cons, which is why I'm like, oh, we can just go on to the A, B because he was kind of moving me along there to like what that could look like. But yeah, some of those, those cons there were the performing arts classes and not having those back-to-back trimesters. Those are some of the things that were articulated out here. The, the pros obviously are fewer transitions and having that, that time for that relationship building, yes.
Do we as a board have to decide whether the administration wants to go with A, B or no A, B? And we, if we were to pick Plan C, could we say, figure out how it works and go with what you want? And is that a more desirable option for, for a decision from us?
I, I mean, I think really what we're trying to do is just show you the work that we have been done. We have some recommendations at the very end and then like hear from you what you would like, which direction you'd like us to go in. Because we're, yeah, yeah. So again, we had a pros and cons with the A, B schedule. So there is some room for student choice, it does allow those PE and music classes. And it does allow for that one full-year course we run if we prioritize like mathematics in there. Again, doesn't fix those back-to-back trimesters, you know, you're not gonna have all your classes in back-to-back. You might, so we have to really make sure that our teachers are on the same page with their pacing charts. So if they have science in first trimester and science in third trimester, that they're picking it up, you know, maybe just a little bit of review so that they can move forward without, you know, yeah. The special education department did talk about some of the limited availability with service minutes during core instructional periods, you know. So these are just things that we'd have to make sure that we're engaged, our special services department, and to ensure that maybe if we're doing things differently, like how we're servicing kids with their, with their IP minutes, that, that we have a plan for that, so.
Yeah, and we've kind of come to the idea of, say, a student is, a student on an IP is enrolled in math and still needs math support and based on his IP. I think with a longer period, there's the opportunity to, to split the class so they can get the instruction from the licensed math teacher on a daily basis and then flip to the math support he was in that same hour. So we've, we've, we've already sort of tried to problem solve that possibility.
Member Samuel.
Thank you. So on Plan C, three-by-five with A, B, cons, I guess I would be concerned with former science teacher. You know, less time in most core classes or some core classes like sciences, social studies to meet standards. Have, have those teachers been able to express any concerns there about, you know, okay, now they're trying to meet their year-long standards in two trimesters, are they gonna be able to do that?
So part of what we've done is we've had this committee that has pulled together. And before I came to the school board, I wanted to go to the middle school teacher. So I worked with Brian and I worked with Sue and I, I did a presentation to the middle school, a different presentation because we've eliminated an option basically that we want to explore. So I talked about everything with them and then I've also given them a Google form that they can provide feedback, just like, give me your comments, give me your stuff. The committee is gonna be reconvening and taking a look at all of that. So that's hearing from the school sites. And then we also have our content specialist meeting on Monday. I was waiting till after we talked as well because if, if there's direction or things that I'm hearing from you, I want to be able to articulate it to my content specialist. So it's like Erin Salmala, our science specialist, can really hear that, you know, like which structure, what we might be moving in, how to be planful of that. And I know we're implementing new standards in science as well, which is a big adjustment too and, and could be quite the challenge.
Superdignax.
Just one, one sentiment that I've heard from variety board members and to some degree I, I share that this part of the, the thing to wrestle with at this point is, is really the, the core instruction piece and thinking about. I, I do believe that, that I, I like block schedule, I taught in a block schedule, I was administrator, administrator of block schedule. I think it can be more engaging. And I think that, that seat time doesn't necessarily equal learning. And at the same time, I am, I do have some concerns yet about how does less time in English Language Arts improve our performance when we're identified as a school district that needs to improve? So I would say that with huge respect to the, the team too, and I know that there's a lot going into it. But I would, I would want to know particularly for English Language Arts and I think Principal Kaczynski addressed part of it of like, if we could do a trimester of reading or there, there are different ways, but I, I would like to see that further articulated before I feel comfortable in moving away from core instruction.
Can I, can I repeat to that a little bit? I think it's very important once, when we start talking about reading in secondary schools is that every teacher is a reading teacher. So we have literacy standards that we are required to teach in all of our content areas. And so whether a student is in science class or English class, the reading pieces to instruction, to teach reading in science is, is a little different than what you're getting, what you would get in an English class, but it's still reading instruction. So we are, we are, we started this journey last year at Lincoln Park with making sure we have building wide reading strategies that we have consistent through our building, through our building classrooms and we continue our journey. And so I think that, that is an important piece in how we are going to address reading. Our English teachers, I'm married to one, she will tell you she is not a reading teacher. She's an English teacher and I've heard that among other English teachers as well. So I think it's very important that when we start talking about reading and how we teach it and the standards that we get, it's, it's everybody's shoulder in that lower, including our math teachers, because literacy strategies in math improve math as well. So.
I seem to remember staff development on that many years ago where, again, we were focusing on teaching reading and ways to do that across the board in a lot of classes. And I, I know that's been part of our program in the past.
Yeah, back then it was called reading in the content area, the content area, literacy depends on the district you're in.
And it'll be addressed again, ELAs being looked at or has been looked at and is in rulemaking currently with, with the state of Minnesota. And so our committees, our ELA committees are getting together and so there will be staff development that will be coming towards teachers based off of that, once we get, get that solidified.
Member Oswald.
Reading is a building need, why can't that be the focus of win in the building?
Well, students have needs in many other areas of this region.
Oh, absolutely. I don't, but I mean, what I'm hearing is they're saying this is the.
Without win, we don't, without win, we don't necessarily have any other time to provide any interventions. But in the six-period day, we don't have any time to provide interventions.
Well, I'm, I'm saying in any, in any schedule, I'm looking at the three-by-five right now and there's still win. And so, you know, I, I am coming from the point of view of what can we fit in, in what we have? And, and if you're saying your win time in your building is, is productive, that's a whole other thing. But I've had too many experiences where win is not productive for a vast majority of kids. And so finding ways to engage kids in that win period is super important.
Your point is well made, we've heard as well and I think others will agree as well, even some of our teachers, that the win time in some cases is not being leveraged the best that it could. And there's a lot of room for improvement, yet we need time for interventions, yet we need time to also provide some SEL supports. And, and so there's a lot of things that, that we need to accomplish that win could allow us to accomplish. And yes, sometimes it is, some places, having a focus allows us at least say we can have that done well. But those are a lot of decisions that we have to wrestle with, with staff and try to make some decisions around, how do we use this time that we do have available? And we'll have more and more discussions on that. I'm sure it was first.
I just want to share this with you too because as we're having this discussion, I decided to go back and look at the draft of the desired daily experience by students. And, and I think win is, is an important part probably of some of those needs for our students and their desired daily experience.
I, I make some, some unsupported assumptions that students look at win and social time.
But it's, it's.
And not necessarily academic time.
It's a lot of different things, it's different things for different students, yes.
And that's part of the reboot, that's a use of it, and that's part of the reboot of win. Not only expectations across the district, how it should be used, but then a reboot for our students on the importance of it and how they view it and changing the imperception of it. I think that's, that will be part of the reboot if we want to continue with it. Member Samuel.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, well, in just my little two cents about win is that it has been very effective for a lot of students that I know, so I just wanted to add that other perspective. Not that it, we can always look for ways to improve, but I was gonna actually move away from the win discussion and I had to step out for a minute to get a drink of water. But when, as far as Plan C goes and looking at the without A, B and the with A, B, I was just curious if there was a, I mean, maybe you said this and I apologize, but wondering if there was a preference from the team about the with or without A, B? From my perspective, I really like the idea of allowing for music to continue all year and especially allowing, um, at the middle school level, gym to all your both of those things. So is there?
I, I don't know that there was a like preference per se, but we were recognizing that, you know, PE and moving their bodies and having, if you're having an instrument going throughout the year. So we wanted to show a couple of different options. Did you say there was a preference?
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry, yeah, Brian, he was in the committee.
I was in the Wisconsin.
Oh, you were there that night, okay, yeah.
And I participated in all of the meetings, I guess I would say that I knew there was a preference for the three-by-five, but not necessarily three-by-five win over that.
I wanted to provide you with some different variations because I think the, the without was what was presented in 2017 and this was just like thinking a little bit differently about the three-by-five and trying to do something different. And Brian and I have had further conversations since we've met with the committee about, well, what if we were on a three-by-five or ended with, or, or what if we kept, left our six and put things on a trimester for our electives on a wheel and trimesters? I mean, we've, we're continuing to have like what if, what if, what if conversations around all of this, so, yeah.
Thank you so much for all this information and putting all of that work into it and it's just nice to know. I mean, we're still looking at different, talking to people, so.
This is really, I think the objective of this presentation was to share our progress, talk about pros and cons, give some input on, on where are possible directions. And I, I would, I would also say that, you know, the three-by-five A, B schedule, if there, if there are, if we're going to go with, no matter what we choose, we have to go, go towards it with a lot of intentionality and resource and, and focus. And if, if we are doing, for example, the three-by-five A, B schedule, that we would have to double down on disciplinary literacy training with our staff and it sounds like there's some great starts. But making sure that we're maximizing that. When I learned to teach in a block schedule, we had a lot of training and a lot of professional learning around, how do you teach differently in a block schedule than in a shortened period day? And I would say that that disciplinary literacy piece would be important for us to double down on as a district too.
I would add to that, we're not necessarily going to a block of like 85 minutes. We're going from 49 minutes to.
I think it was just 60, 7 minutes more per day.
I don't know if I would consider a 16-minute period a block, just a long, it's a long period of reading.
Yeah.
And, and I think that there's, but even within that 16, that's it because like, again, when you go back to that daily, the, the desired daily experience would look at teachers wanting to make better connections, kids wanting to make better connections. It would be that opportunity.
Cost analysis of this one's a little bit more. Every single course would need to be touched in the middle school schedule in order to make an adjustment from semesters to trimesters for grading purposes. Everything gets condensed down into 12 weeks for, instead of the, the traditional 18 weeks. So we would be making a lot of shifting, our assessments when they happen, our pacing guides. Everything would need to be touched in the curriculum office. This one gives me great anxiety, I know that the committee really supports it and this one just makes me like, okay, I'm not gonna go to sleep for the next year. Like how are we gonna do that? How are we gonna get all these teachers together to do that? You know, there potentially could be some FTE adjustments. We were, we went out the assumptions that were in, in the 2017, you know, it's about a 4% increase is what they were figuring. You know, that, that one's a hard one, hard one to really determine at this point in time. There would be no busking or transportation additional costs, curriculum adjustments is the big, is a big part of there. And then, you know, undetermined would be any adjustments in the DFT contract that would have to happen in order to do the three-by-five. This one would have to be run through the DFT as they have language in there about their current workdays. Where the seven-period day has old contract language in there and the six-period day is currently in contract language. So this one would be, this, this one, Ethan's very well aware of what we're talking about, but it would have to go to vote, he says. So this one is, is a little bit.
It would have to go to vote for what?
Making adjustments because it would be different amount of minutes for prep time, it would be different responsibilities. It's, it's shifting a whole bunch of things that is not in alignment with current contract language.
Member Oswald.
I have to say that if I'm going to, you know, kind of focus on my inner grade cleaner, that a board's role is to focus on achievement that we can't necessarily help, but we can provide the framework that allows for achievement options and, and achievement. that a board's role is to focus on achievement that we can't necessarily help, but we can provide the framework that allows for achievement options and, and achievement to soar. And what I look at is, in the, in the comparison page beside by, you know.
This one here?
Yep, that one, where this framework of, of a three by five schedule gives the most amount of class minutes per year. And I would love to give you the framework and allow you to decide how those minutes look.
So, um, yes, no. So in math, if we were to take that math and prioritize it and put them into three trimesters, we're actually increasing their amount of time in mathematics.
Oh, great, yeah.
But in English, when we're reducing it down to two trimesters, we're having a reduction from a hundred and twenty-six hours in a year to a hundred and fifteen hours. So there's reduction in science, there's, everything else has a reduction.
What if, the what ifs, what if, if you, you know, for the third trimester, you made math an A B day, you know? Those kinds of things, their, their options are limitless, really. And, and so, you know, that, that gives them a little bit more and, you know, or math or English or whatever. So there, there are ways to tweak it. And so I don't know that, you know, as a board member, I want to say that, you know, I love this example right here and you can't change it. What I'm saying is, is this framework gives you the most minutes to play with and to figure out how to make it work. And, and these are examples, what you've given us is an example concept of, of, you know, if you provide prioritize math and, you know, cutting that kind of stuff. Maybe there's other things that we don't know about that. Or, you know, you, you said you're still what ifing and I would hope that you're still what ifing, because maybe we haven't found the exact right thing yet. But this concept gives you the most variety of choice in, in the minutes available. Because, you know, eighty-four seventy-seven, yeah, that's a lot. And, and I do recognize that core subjects, you know, either get more or less, there's no in-between there in what you're proposing. But is there ways to increase it? I don't know. I don't know, but I know that, that I can vote to give you as much time as possible. And that's what, what affects achievement is more time teaching. And that's where my focus is, is that to give teachers more time with their kids, so you can affect achievement and hopefully grow achievement. And that's the best I can do as a board member. What you do with it is up to you guys.
Chair Lowell.
But then going by, I, I, I appreciate Member Oswald's inner cleaner language too. But as, as a board member, no matter, I mean, I, I agree that we've got, you know, such talent sitting right here in our room that is charged with getting more art into our middle school, and so here we are. But as a board, we also have financial. So depending on what would be the best for our students, we also have to bring in our, our finance. And, and then we might, as a board, have a tough decision about what we will or will not keep on the district's offerings at any level in order to afford what we need to do in the middle school. And so there's just lots of moving pieces and I'm like with Jen, it gives me great anxiety. At a time when our mental health and anxiety of, of our professional staff and our families and our students, yes, we have to make this change to the middle school. You know, could we do a temporary fix with the goal of a stronger offering that we know we have, we have maybe an opportunity to do? But, you know, if we're under a time crunch, which I hate, I hate, you know, having to make a decision for what we think would be best for our students. And so I just, there, there's a financial piece as well. And I think that's what really came out of the two thousand seventeen study, is that a lot of the different options had some financial ramifications. So as board members too, we have to almost, you know, have conversation about if, if whatever is the best, what, what we think is best for the middle school, what financially gives in, in other areas potentially, or a referendum.
And, and thank you for that, Joe, because that's something that we've been weighing as a committee as well as, you know, like, we need an immediate solution. We know that we need an immediate solution. I wouldn't want to call it a temporary solution necessarily, but an immediate solution, because temporary means that something else is gonna always happen. And we know sometimes things don't always happen, but we need an immediate solution. And we also, we, we kept talking, like, we don't know where the strategic plan is really going. It's, it seems almost premature at, at points in times when we're having conversations to make significant changes without knowing what we're gonna find through that planning process. Okay, not strategic plan, strategic roadmap and operational plan, but, you know, we don't have that yet. And so for us to, to make some of those decisions, you know, that's why we were, we're gonna update you with where we're at and try to get from you. Maybe you have some direction you want to give us so that we can go back to, go back and refine what we're doing.
Member Oswald.
Chair Lowell brought up a very good point, because if we're looking at temporary, my recommendation, recommendation would change to, of course, the least expensive, whatever, whatever. You know, the least amount of change, the least amount of work involved, because we're gonna have to redo it all. When I say that I, I'm behind Plan C, it's for the much more permanent change. Which other direction the administration wants to recommend is, is vital. If you want a temporary solution, tell us, because that will help us, you know, in our discussion about what, what we can support. If it is something that you want to work on that's more permanent, tell us, because that's, that's vital information and we'd change my mind if something, so.
I'm gonna come to Member Sandholm, but before that, I mean, that's why we're, we're presenting, because we're trying to make sure that we share what the plans look like and concept so that it could be, you know, board is really clear about the dominos, right? The board is really clear about the pros and cons. And so that as we prepare a recommendation, we're gonna make sure that you've had a chance to ask a lot of great questions, which you have been giving us a lot of things to think about, which you have given us a lot of things to think about. So we just continue to ask, like, give us something to think about, because at some point, we're going to work with the committee to develop a recommendation, whether it's A, B, or C. And we just want to make sure that it's thoroughly made and all of you, member Sandholm, do.
I just want to point out to Member Oswald to also look at this in a different way too. You know, this three trimester, one credit with a lot of minutes there, ten thousand plus minutes, it's really only in math, because that's one of the courses set up there. Showing a three trimester course can not be minutes. What I worry about is the hundred and fifteen days for science, for social studies, for English, you can do something like that. But, you know, now take the student that misses ten days of, of sick or whatever for those two trimesters. And that's even less days than they're given. So, you know, I think as a teacher, you know, I mean, I know, I personally, so I can only speak to myself, not for other, but, you know, it's that those, those days are just as valuable maybe as those minutes. And I need to find another way to do negotiations later to try to add minutes to the day, that's, that's your goal.
My goal in here is to give the administration the maximum amount of minutes to figure out how to make the most out of them. It's, and, and when I say, when I say that, I'm not talking about, about what we've seen so far. I'm, I'm talking about there's ten thousand three hundred minutes per time slot. And how, how are they gonna divide up those time slots? That's, that's their job, not my job.
Yeah, so, Member Zdowski, did you have your, did you have your hand up?
Um, I'm not very.
Okay, super duper nice.
Sure, I'd just like to thank Jen and our principals and the, the rest of the very, very broad team for the work that they've done. I think that coming forward with three or you could actually say four, really robust options is, is really important for us. I think it's, it's a, it's a challenging time to, to decide what, what is the best choice. And I think that we need to, we need to continue to, to invest in the process. I think that ultimately, ultimately, it has to be about what, what is gonna deliver the best outcomes for our students. And, and as, as we've said throughout the whole night, we do have to have some trust in the people that are closest to, to the work, to, to give valued input on that. So I just want to say thank you for your time, thank you for leadership as a, as a, as a group and to you as a, as a director.
Thank you. I am gonna skip all of the high school stuff, because when, we did review one month and I gave you all that information, you can see where the cost analysis ended up. But we, we pretty much pulled back on that, that, that idea of the seven period day for, for the middle school, knowing about the costs. And so at this point in time, first, I aligned back all of our things that we were saying in our desired daily experiences and our priorities and where they kind of landed. So you can see that and review that. But we did, we did make a recommendation from the committee that we want to be able to move forward with planning middle school options that would have fit our immediate needs and address those art implementation standards and use resources that are currently available to us and that would be the most benefit to our students. And while the seven period day, some people call it like the gold standard, but like is a desired option. It does come with some changes and significant resources that we just didn't feel like we were comfortable planning with anymore. But maybe that is something that should be considered and explored as part of the longer term planning process that aligns with the strategic, I have a plan, I didn't know it was a roadmap. So that's where we left off and I just want to thank you for your time and I appreciate that you took the time. And if you have any questions further after this, please feel free to contact me and I will answer you as I am able. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Walper, you were brief.
Tell me briefly, I laughed.
All right, so our next presentation is going to be done by our climate coordinator, Jacob Loren.
Formerly of Piedmont Elementary.
It's our suspension and O D R and bullying data report.
Afternoon is now evening, school board, metal chair. Normally I like to listen to some trees, but I do want to just give a movement, we have a lot of data to go through. This is our annual behavior bullying and suspension reports. Thank you for your patience, this is normally done in the summer. I was out of state for the two meetings in summer, so thank you for your patience.
Sorry, hold on, here's your.
Cool. So first of all, I want to thank two people, one is Tanya Lake, who gets all this data for us and does such a great job in getting our public copies ready. I also want to thank Ron Lake, who allowed me to use some of his previous slides, including the, this bias slide, which I think is super important when reviewing data. And so really kind of going through our three main biases, the one of being the framing effect. And really this is a cognitive bias where an individual's choice from a set of options is influenced more by how the information is worded than by the information itself. Also attribution bias refers to the systematic errors made when people evaluate or try to find reasons for their own or others' behavior. And then lastly, confirmation bias, really finding what we want when we're looking at data. So we're going in with kind of preconceived notions. And so we're gonna start with office discipline referrals. Hopefully you have access to this whole slide, all the tabs are open to anyone with the link as they are public copies. And it, it's kind of interesting going through the data, especially with last year having a significant amount of days with distance learning. So a lot of times I like to compare it to two thousand and eighteen numbers, when we added more kind of common year. But as you can see, at the bottom is our grand total, we're about four thousand total office discipline referrals. So these are for major behaviors. As you can see, the year before we had four hundred and sixty-nine, and then two years previous, four thousand three hundred and forty-one. And we'll kind of get to some of our larger stuff with our suspension data. Not to, to kind of spoil surprise in a couple of slides, our suspension data is higher, but our O D Rs are, are, are not. And so to me that, and we've talked about this as an admin team of getting back to basics, especially when some of our stuff has gotten watered down after two years of distance learning and changes. Getting back to really tracking that data, because it is such a vital piece in getting kids supports, especially sometimes with some of that deeper mental health support from the community access. I think kind of when you look through this, a couple really stand out to me. The first one being eighteen hundred disruption and insubordination. This one's always hard for me, because how you perceive disruption and insubordination may be different than how I perceive it. Just being a previous team, I never rid up a kid for disruption or insubordination. I never did, my threshold was extremely high. And so we have a subjective lens with this. Seeing that number that high, that definitely sends a red flag for me of getting back to working on some of those de-escalation skills that we hit on in two thousand and eighteen and getting back to some of those basics with that. You know, I think the other one is nine hundred and thirteen of being violence and threat. And so those are really difficult and often non-negotiable. Office discipline referrals sometimes have penis enough suspensions. And so to see that one quarter of our office discipline referrals deal with physical harm and or violence makes me alarmed, for sure. And then I'd like to include our tech violations too, especially as we continue to get devices into kids' hands. I know that was a big ask last year with a lot of the distance learning that was happening and, and how much that was. And for that to be seventy-five, I think is pretty low. And so seeing that our kids are able to handle that kind of larger responsibility of having technology at their fingertips. And so I'm just gonna keep going, you guys can always interject.
Hey. Do we track or should we track the amount of, of any of these incidents of the thirty-nine twenty-four that ended in referrals and in the court system?
You know, I don't know if we track that, if we do, I never have seen a document on that.
Does that happen occasionally?
I'd say that'd be probably more common for pretty, you know, like suspension type behavior. A major, you know, is like our main behavior tracking tool, right? And so a lot of times it's, it's something that we're asking for administration help, a teacher is asking for admin help. And so I'd say, you know, if it's a suspension, it's also, you know, a number in this major number. And so I would say it'd be more of the more heinous.
And my question surrounds, you know, a lot of the talk with the BIPOC populations in our community of schools that's in pipeline. And so I think that would be a, a way that we can, we can track how much we do or don't contribute to that. And we're get reducing that number. And so I would hope that we could look at figuring out how we can, even if those are internal numbers or, or whatever there is. And my other comment, or I guess question is, you know, verbal abuse versus disruption, disorderly conduct and insubordination. Can you give me from your perspective, the difference between that?
And that's kind of the hard part, and especially when we have so many categorizations and that's coming, that's not our labels on those. Those are, and he controlled. And so once we might, and one teacher might put verbal abuse as insubordination. I'll say in my experience, like verbal abuse was rarely ever seen as the reason for a major behavior. It probably get categorized in the majority of cases as disruption. So again, I think this is a lot of data, so if there's time to process, I'd be happy to come back at a, a later time too, more than happy to do that. I'm gonna skip down to our, our bullying and cyberbullying resolutions. Again, that's a open link, public forum that can be accessed. And where we're looking at is we had seventy-two categorized as bullying and seventeen as, as cyberbullying. And just being a reminder that we do on our website have a way for parents or students, if they want anonymously to report that. That goes to myself, Mr. Bonds over here, and then that principal of that site. So every site has their own. Included in that is also hazing and harassment. And so that just gives you that kind of extra layer if people want to go that route. And really looking at a variety of interventions done with this, you know, seventy-two for our eight thousand plus kids. Oftentimes can seem low, and really that again goes into that kind of how is it categorized in regards to that? And I always like to remind, you know, bullying is targeted and repetitive, you know? And so also being really wary of our. And so also being really wary of our language with it because it's a big deal. And making sure that when we report bullying, it is bullying.
So is part of the resolutions in here is parent notified at 16 and three, so 19. Is that, is, is 19 out of 72 the only times parents ever notified or is that included in the other resolutions also?
That means that was the, the highest level of resolution. That's how it ends up getting categorized, if that makes sense.
Sure. And so, so do you, are parents notified at the higher levels?
So vast majority, I can't say every single school for every single, single office discipline referral gets notified. That is definitely best practice. And if parents don't know, we really can't expect behavior to fully change, especially in our lower levels. I found as a dean, it was the most effective way to curb behavior. And not just notifying of the bad, but also the good. And how are we making that relationship and connection? Otherwise you are on an island trying to kind of curb maybe a repetitive behavior.
Thank you for that explanation because that seemed to stand out to me, that's why I asked.
We go down to our suspension data. I have, I believe, five different slides on this for us to look at this in different ways. Our first one is by school site as well as by student groups. And so you can see we have it differentiated male and female, Hispanic or Latino, American Indian or Alaska native, Asian, Black or African American, Native Hawaiian or other Pacific Islander, white, two or more races, free and reduced lunch, and paid lunch, special education and general education. And again, these are the numbers that are created by state guidelines for how we differentiate groups. And so you can see kind of a wide gamut of, of different numbers depending on school sites. We've had some schools that posted some of their lowest data in a decade. We've also seen some high increases at some of our other schools. And so this one is, I think, a really great way to get that district snapshot of kind of those grandiose numbers in regards to our district.
Member Oswald? Oh, sorry. I saw him go first.
I don't want to monopolize the data. The, the number that stands out for me, of course, is the specialized students at Lincoln and Denfeld. And do you anticipate that those numbers will improve because of the new setting three and four programs that are being implemented? Being that those students' needs will probably be more met and, and so they may have additional resources that help them?
Could you repeat that question? That's what I was trying to ask myself.
The specialized students at Lincoln and Denfeld, the number's really high. And I'm just asking if it's anticipated that those numbers will be reduced because of the setting threes and three and four programs in specialized that are going to be implemented?
That is one of the goals of that program, but there are also other additional programs that are being offered or developed this year or implemented this year at Denfeld. And we have Principal Tuscan here, we have Principal Kersmetschek here to also discuss some of the programs he has available now. And I guess this is a good time or do we want to wait until the end for this kind of conversation?
I'm really cool with organic. If you both feel like you want to jump in, you want to jump in.
And just share some of the program, programming structures that we're putting in place this year to reduce suspensions at Denfeld. And this is at Denfeld specifically and Lincoln Park, but other schools also receive additional resources to reduce their suspensions through positive behavioral changes in the sites. But I'll just stick with just Denfeld, some of the, some of the changes you've made this year.
So to address your question directly, yes, you're going to see that number go down, but based on, we have two setting threes. We have a district funded setting three and we have an internal swap, which means we just took a regular L D E B D case manager and moved them over to a setting three. Right now you're talking about 12 kids. Is that going to make an impact? Yes, because it's a chain reaction, right? If you're better serving some of your population, you're going to get a bigger effect than just for those 12 kids. Secondarily to that, some of the resources the district provided Denfeld for this current school year that we're in includes, we've, we've been trying to get a focus room off the ground since, I mean, it was coming online right before the pandemic hit. And it's taken us this long to come circle back to it. The con, the concept behind a focus room is pre-referral. So imagine something starts to go sideways in a classroom and allowing teachers to make a phone call and say, here's what's going on. And then have an M H P pick up the phone, a mental health practitioner to say, here's what a next step could be. Could be a focus walk, could be a step in, step out, where a dean or an assistant principal steps in to supervise a class while the teacher steps out to have a conversation. But the concept with a focus room is pre-referral and that's for any kid in the building, whether it's Gen HAD or Sped HAD. So that's where you're going to get a big impact. In addition to that, where we're also trying to get off the ground is an alternative to suspension program, which the reason it's called alternative primarily is two things, I think it boils down to. One, what kind of structured programming are you offering that, that student during the day to de-escalate, build skills, do harm repair? And then secondarily, a licensed teacher so that they're getting educated inside the school. Part of the reason suspensions are so detrimental to graduation is that you're taking the kid out of school. And we're not just talking one kid for three days. You're talking that kid may be gone for three days, three times. Going back to member Sandholm's comment about a kid missing 10 days with some of these schedule options, it's a substantial impact. So, so from a focus room, which comes with a, with a number of tools to adding an alternative to suspension program, I would say it's a combination of things. One of the things that we noticed last year when we were facing a lot of challenges was your continuum of tools was very narrow. You didn't have a lot of options to deal with some, some really challenging situations. Now we have a pre-referral option through the focus room. You have what we normally do from supervision. And then you have, should something come up where a student gets suspended, can you serve that student better in school? Typically you'd see a kid go out of school for two to three days for a fight, for example. Now they may leave the day it happens to de-escalate and then come back in for day two or day two and three in a structured setting to get skill building, to get de-escalation, to get harm repaired and to get educated. So it's got to be a continuum of things. We'll save setting four for another Cow meeting because that's a whole different thing and that's currently not being implemented. But that was a big conversation last year that we'll have to come back to at some point.
How about it? Quick question.
Quick question for Principal Tuscan. I, I, I'm just curious about, how much do you think these numbers are skewed from Denfeld High School just because of the way the years got started? The unfortunate start to the year in which I'm assuming everything's, we're better prepared for this year.
I don't want to jinx things. The, the term I've used to describe the first three days of school is smooth. So things are off to a smooth start. Really, I think what we saw was an acute impact of kids being out of school for 18 months. And all the stuff that came with that was social media, with social isolation, and then the complex, the complexities of interpersonal relationships that have been fractured over time all came together and came to a head. So, yeah.
So these numbers are somewhat skewed with the first half of the year and then things got a little.
I, I will tell you that yes, they're skewed to the front half of the year, but we were still seeing challenges. I mean, they were coming down throughout the school year, but we were still seeing some fairly significant challenges, just less frequently as the year progressed. And you would have felt it in the building. Like when you walked in at the end of the year, it felt like the air was out of the building. But there were some still challenges going on in the background for sure. It just was less frequent, less intense. But certainly skewed to September, October, November when things were very hot there.
And while they, I believe we're just not to say that while it was more acute because of what Tom shared, we're in this position here because of a history of this kind of data existing in our school district. So we want to make sure that while the pandemic may exacerbate things, there's been years of unfortunate data that is reflected here. And that's why we are in a position where we have to do these reports and make sure that we are putting good things in place for students to meet their needs. And this is one of those things.
I think the pandemic highlighted all the inequities in society, right? That's a well said.
Yeah, we've.
And who are you, sir?
Oh, I'm Brad Kersmetschek. Hello, everybody. So the numbers that we, I think, so the programming that we offer at Lincoln Park, we, we have a kind of an administrative structure to make sure that we have highly trained professionals, teachers, teacher level administrator, even a master, master teachers as deans of students. So our frontline is, you know, this year is, one of the things is different, which we do have M H Ps. And that was added this year. That's a little different because now we have people on the frontline pre-referral trying to calm students down that are, that are trained, that are highly effective. But then we also have deans and we have a counselor at each grade as well to continue to build those personal connections that we desire because we know when kids are connected to the adults in the building, it's going to go better for them. We do have an alternative to suspension. One of our challenge last year was that we didn't have that position filled. And so our early year, there was, we were almost completely reactionary to the behaviors where we were not able to, you know, if we were going to suspend a student, they were out for two or three days, not one day, and then back in for some support and some instruction and some follow-up. I'm thankful this year that we are mostly fully staffed. The one, the area that we're not staffed in is paraprofessionals in the specialized area. But in terms of behavioral supports, building supports, we are, we are fully staffed. So every, every grade has a counselor and a dean. We have check-in connect that has been added to Lincoln Park last year. That made a significant impact. And then the impact of our, Lincoln Park is, you know, programs are as good as the people in it. And we have an exceptional person in my building with regards to P P I S as the umbrella and the framework and tier one, tier one recognition of students and student behavior and teaching conduct and teaching expectations. And for her to be able to focus on that position full-time this year is, could be, I'm expecting it to be a game changer. She's, three days in, I would say, smooth. That's not wood. No, there we go underneath. So, yeah, I think as, if you ever come to Lincoln Park and you want to see how, if the, if the day is going well, just stand in one place for 10 minutes and see if the hallway lights shut off. Because that means kids are staying in class and kids are where they're supposed to. Because we have motion lights that shut off after 10 minutes. And we, we have a number of times in the last three days already, we've had days like that last year too, but we've had a number of periods where the hallway lights are off, so.
And I think I, the pause coordinator that he's talking about that they heard in January, her name's Lisa Wentworth. And I was able to talk to her this week and get some of her data. And so like you said, this program's been built in the Lincoln Park for a very long time. Thank you. And by not having that, so in her time there, January to May of last year, she had 82 dean admin alternative, alternative, alternative to suspension referrals. So there's 82 from, you know, half a year as well as 700 student check-ins. So to me, that shows the power of that programming as well as what Tom is building over at Denfeld for that. And even if he times that by two, that's 160. That can be kind of days taken off.
I would add to that too. I think one of the things that I, why I mentioned that we're fully staffed is that we have people that are able to not only, so two things in my mind are going in two different, first, I'm going to start with the parent connection that we talked about. You know, we, we do connect with parents as much as humanly possible, email, call, text, however we possibly can to connect with parents if an incident happens. Parents are involved. We do readmits with students where we're talking about the programming that they're going to see in the coming days. Parents are, parents will be part of that conversation. But what we're going to be able to do this year is even when they're done after, if they're suspended a day, they're in our alternative programming for a day or two, however that, that works, however that day goes, we now, we are, we have the ability to follow up with kids. So, so whether it's Lisa or it's my M T S S coordinator, who can bring groups of kids together and run social groups and social emotional groups, it's, it's, it's an exciting possibility. The prospects are pretty exciting for me right now.
And so thank you for that question because we too are very, you know, we're concerned about the number of students with special needs who have been suspended. We're concerned about the data that is here. That's why we have both principals here. But we are sharing some of the things that we are proactively intentionally putting in place next year, or not next year, last year, this year to make things better. So we, we want to make sure kids aren't in school. We want to have fewer suspensions. And so we are, to be honest, we're excited about this year. I think we're off to a great start and it's going to continue.
Don't put up the question. It is going to continue.
Thank you.
And, and I, Mr. Tuscan brought up one important point and it, and at least my only other question, I promise, is that we don't know the number of repeat students in these numbers. So, you know, if there's a number of 81, we don't know actually, actually the number of students compared to the 81 incidents. And I think that would be helpful in disintegrating the data in the future, knowing that, you know, that, that 553 number is alarming and, but knowing if, you know, 12 of those or something like that was, was, you know, addressed by one student and how is that one student getting help and that sort of thing, that would be really helpful in, in promoting a better image than these numbers can work through.
No, I was just going to say, and I know it's going to be part of what we continue on. But having, having worked in a number of different schools and different districts that have had historically underserved populations and, and significant behavioral issues, looking at what we're doing here in Duluth and particularly in many of our West Side schools, I think it's, it's really first rate, research-based best practice. When I was at, at Lincoln Park and I was listening to their, their P P I S referral process and M T S S structure, just happened to be there for, for a meeting, just first rate stuff. Thinking about the BAR program, being nationally recognized, thinking about the way it feels when you come into Denfeld. It's, it's, it's due to a lot of hard work and a lot of systems. And these are challenges that, that most of the country are struggling with right now. It's, I think sometimes people say, oh, it's Duluth or oh, it's Denfeld or whatever it may be. But it's, most, most, most school districts are, are struggling particularly with their high schools and middle schools right now with, with trauma that's been exacerbated by the pandemic. And so I appreciate the cohesive holistic way that you've all tackled it. But without further ado.
Thank you. Great questions and thank you both for chiming in on that. So this is basically a breakdown of by incident, so what they were given OSS for. And although you said, Ms. Oswald, of how are we expanding these data practices? And when I did my community meetings this last winter, you know, that was one of the biggest inputs too. And I'd love to figure out a way that, that data is more accessible. Right now we're relying on our, you know, director of assessment who already has a 1.0 or more job that has to pull all this data. And so that's one of my goals is how can we get more differentiation so that we can make more informed decisions? You know, and I, I think of two of, and I don't have a slide on it, but just how many suspensions were done in common areas this year? And to me, that is a direct relation to staffing. If you can't staff your large open spaces, then you're going to, to, to deal with kind of larger behaviors. So I think what I'm most excited about is to be staffed this year. You know, I did 50 days of subbing last year and that's not to toot my horn, that's to say how dire our district was for staffing. And so to be fully staffed and to actually have preventative staff there, I mean, how much of this could have been avoided by having an adult there? That's exciting to me to be staffed to the levels we are right now. So again, this, feel free to, to go through. I did, on the next slide, I think it's pretty interesting and break this down by the last, the five years. And, you know, some of these trends like Ms. Oswald brought up with budget, special education isn't new at all. You know, if you go historically back, we're looking at a close You know, if you go historically back, we're looking at a close to a 50-50 split every single year. And even go back to 2017 and we're talking 170 more special education suspensions. You know, so that's just one area. There's also multiple areas where this, this doesn't match our population numbers. If you can go to the next slide. This is, this is kind of where it makes your eyes open, right? In regards to our disproportionality in suspensions. Last year was our, our first year after five years being off of Minnesota Department of Human Rights for some of these numbers. We are not in agreement for this, this year as well, even though these numbers could definitely justify it. You know, I, I think without going through them, you, you can kind of see the ones that have pretty large discrepancies to them. And historically going back, I can go back to 1213, these numbers look very, very similar in regards to that disproportionality. Any questions on kind of the overall data? I think, one, it's, I know for myself, even watching it last year, it takes time to digest. I also think about as a system that has to be fully tackled and agreed upon by our district that we are going to, can't be done in silo to, to kind of adjust what these numbers are. So feel free to email me, otherwise I'm more than happy to come back as well on those. Any questions on kind of our overall data?
I guess I just have a question. When it comes to OSS, this is where it gets a little murky for me. So is, have we decided, is OSS used for protection and safety of students or is OSS used to be punitive? So do we have an idea of how we use it? And then do we know, like, how is it being implemented? Are there like things that student, like, what are the policies and procedures around when OSS is appropriate and when it is not? And is that agreed upon district-wide?
That's a great question. And I'll definitely say that we don't have a unified approach. It's definitely some differentiation between schools. I would say the, the, where administrators are going to is our family and student handbook. And when they see that X equal, you know, A equals B, a lot of times we will see the suspension happening. So.
So in those cases, then we think about it as punitive. We don't think about it as a safety measure?
I'd say going back to two slides ago where it says what for incidences, you can read that. Not everyone has to deal with safety, you know? And so to me, that safety part means as a school system, how do we ever get rid of suspensions fully? Because there are times we need safety and we need proximity, we need space. But on those other areas, especially looking at again, our disruption and disorderly conduct, those are areas that we can definitely make impacts on in regards to that. So a lot of times it goes down to disruption of learning for others. That's how it kind of gets categorized under the suspension forms, kind of inhibiting someone else's right to an education due to your behavior.
But as a district, what we are striving for, even in our handbook, we're trying to make sure that it reflects that, is that we move to a more supportive, more preventative, a more restorative, and alternatives to some of these things besides a suspension. We know that suspension is, it's been a tool in, in the box for a while. And we know as a team, we've talked about how do we make sure we calibrate, right, with our administrators? How do we make sure that we, when we have these calibration meetings as a district, how do we pull our administrators together? Start talking about the incidents that happen, right? And then why is it one school had X number of suspensions versus another school? What led to that suspension? Let's have some discussions on, you know, what, looking at our handbook, how do we apply the handbook to that incidence? So through these calibration conversations, we're hopeful that we'll get more and more aligned with what we are striving to do, which is to be more proactive, more preventative, more restorative, and keep the kids in school. And there are times where we're safety and distance. A suspension might be warranted that keeps a kid out of school, but as you can tell with our additional resources, we're trying to make sure that we reduce those things with the, with the in-school suspension rooms now and alternatives to suspension rooms.
Thank you. I appreciate you both. And thank you principals for working hard on this. I appreciate it.
And I keep going back to these two, but having those resources and tools, you know, if, if that is not available, then you are left to.
Yeah.
One option.
I was actually, like, when you were talking about the resources that we have and how we got here. It's also by a lot of failure. There's a reason we have the systems we have in place at Lincoln Park and it's because we've struggled for years, I think, in part with behavior. If you talk to any of my teachers in the last two years, we've been able to talk about academics. And that hasn't been, that wasn't the case for the previous number of years. Because it was all behavior.
I think that's very admirable and also thinking, kind of tying all this together and, and also, I'm not sure if you're going to go through the, the additional slides too. But thinking about whether it's suspension or SROs and tickets, I, I think that there are different ways the systems have, have worked with students on behavior. And I think that, I've, I've observed in, in Madison, they decided they were going to just, they were, they eliminated out-of-school suspension. But they had no structures like we're putting in place to have anything but. So, so that's almost, in, in many ways, it's worse for the system and worse for the child because there's, it just implodes because there's no, even though suspension for a negative consequence is a bad, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's kind of a caveman's club way of, a tool for working with kids. It's in many ways the only tool that a system, that many systems have. But I admire that we have many, many, many different steps, many different ways of working with kids, both from a universal perspective, tier-two perspective, from a tier-three perspective. And I, I also think that when you talk, I think you're bringing up some excellent questions too about universality, universality of how we're working with kids. We don't currently yet have, you know, PBIS throughout the whole district. But I think that that would be something that, that could, you know, at least guarantee that, that people have a similar approach and a similar opportunity in, in the various schools we work with. But I know you have.
Yeah, I'm just going to go through and talk a little bit about our, our grant that I brought up last year as well as, you know, pretty early on, knowing that our data was, was going to be pretty challenging and what can we do? You know, I think one of the, the biggest things, you know, especially working in large systems is things take three to five, you know, you're always talking three to five years for things to be put in place, especially with professional development is usually one of the biggest inhibitors. But we'll go through some of this if you don't mind going to the next one. Thanks. And really, you know, these three are, are some of our pillars. I've been here to talk about MTSS before. That's my jam. Really see that as, as kind of this larger umbrella, if you don't mind going to the next one. Oh, I may have took that. It's the next one, sorry. Really where all these different supports come under is that MTSS, so multi-tiered systems of supports. So really that, that first level being our tier-one is universal. What are we doing that's preventative for all kids, right? What does every kid get that goes into our billings? Moving up that tier-two for a smaller group of kids that, that tier-one's not hitting, what can we do for interventions to avoid getting to, to that larger behavior? And then that top tier, tier-three for a pretty small group of kids needing pretty intensive intervention. And so we have that in regards to mental health and to regards to what we're, we're working on right now in regards to behavior. And so this is our umbrella for everything that we are working on as a, as a behavior side, as well as kind of an MTSS team. And then there's a ware grant that I'll speak about some more. And, and so for me, MTSS is the vehicle to lower suspension data as well as to lower our special, special education numbers through, you know, vetted, bona fide interventions. And so our academic side kind of went through that, that overhaul five years ago. It got dropped. Now we're picking back up the behavior side as well as combining that with kind of some revamps to our academic side. To me, that's that large systemic change. But again, it takes a lot of work. It takes years of work to do it really, really well. And not only to do it well, but practical for staff to be able to implement. And so right now, we're working on our actual handbook. That'll be a pretty large overarching document, but also wanting to create this kind of quick, quick links as well as that has kind of our embedded interventions. So that the future goal is that, you know, our tier-two is universal and consistent. So those interventions, you can go to Lester, you can go to HomeCraft, you can go to Pliers, and you have bona fide vetted interventions that kids are getting for social, emotional, behavioral needs. I think one of the largest areas and a, and a great commitment by our district is we've actually hired a MTSS, social, emotional, behavioral coordinator for each site. And so we hired 13 of those this year. And those are going to be the ones that are helping us build these systems per school, as well as to start working immediately on those tier-ones so that universal that all kids are getting, that preventative piece. And then they're going to be kind of our conduits for helping with embedding tier-two. And so you guys all, you all have been here a while. We've often been called a, you know, a district of schools instead of a school district. And to me, this is one way that we can get there. I think what's challenging is every school's in such a different place with us because it's been a little bit wild, wild, wild west. And so how are we getting some of those schools that have not had kind of support and training, often our east side? How are we getting them this base level that, you know, all staff and kids deserve?
And thank you for sharing that because I want to make sure we really highlight it that this is something that's supported or being provided comprehensively to all of our sites. So it's not just our West Side schools, it's all of our schools engaging in this positive, proactive, you know, research-based supports for improving climbing cultures of schools. And we talk about MTSS, go back to the desired daily experiences of students. What these MTSS coordinators and sites are working on is how do we make sure kids feel connected and part of throughout our system, right? So PBIS is a, a, a philosophy. They have some structures that, that affords us to foster that in schools. There's other things that's happening in sites that individual schools are working on to think about, well, how are they going to make sure kids feel connected? Regardless of what school they go to, how are we going to make sure kids feel like they belong there, they see themselves there, they can walk in that school and at some point walk in with, being their genuine, authentic self, right? And so those are things that we're striving to do. And when we talk about tier-one, we're talking about, that's what we're talking about, like, how do we make sure those things are happening? And these MTSS coordinators, as well as other resources in sites and training your staff, that's what all of this is intended to do. I saw somebody say I wanted to never stop.
My hand is out, but I think I'll just ask you later.
Okay.
Question. So just to be specific.
I appreciate you sharing that. I would also add that it's meant to improve staff quality too and building community with that. So I'm a huge believer, happy staff, happy kids. So if we're not building community with our staff, then we can't expect much of our data or practices to, to change.
Thank you.
So this is kind of that umbrella I'm talking about. And as we go down, you're really good at this. You're like, good job, dude. All these kind of filter under there. And so as we go down, last year I presented on second step. It was our first year, our implementation year was second step. Second step is social, emotional learning curriculum. And what we've seen as a nation is they broke all record sales after the pandemic. And so many districts are gravitating towards how are we providing the social, emotional learning because we have seen such an uptick in dysregulation and mental health and behavior. And so to me, it's huge because it brings uniformity to our PK through eight sites. And so you switch schools, guess what? It's following you to your next one. Which, which to me, from, from our kind of history, by having something common is a huge win. We're in our, our second year of this. We have a commitment for three more after this year, which we'll look back into. It also got included in our curriculum cycle, social, emotional learning. And so every five years, that's going to be reviewed, which again, to me, may not sound like a lot, but that is a huge win to get something non-academic put into our curriculum review cycle. So we set a goal of 80% this year. We hit 82.3 in our elementaries between the nine and 92 between our middle schools. For vast majority of our schools, this was the first time they were introduced to second step. We did have a few schools that are previously engaged in it. Our goal this year is 85%. We want to increase that 5%. We have a staff member in every building, we call him a champion, that kind of coach and help that staff through it. So that's really helpful to me. It's not some district email coming out to staffs at AVNC. It's their direct colleagues that are kind of helping them with that. And then we bought posters and lanyards for all of our school sites through ware grants this year. We have SOS embedded in our high school. And then Tom has a staff named Heather Jarvis and a team that has worked really close on, on building their kind of homegrown high school as social, emotional learning. And even as someone that's put a lot of time to that, the high school social, emotional learning that for purchase is, is really, really hard to, to like. And so it's a very difficult task to make that something that, you know, an 18-year-old would be happy to sit through. And we just haven't found something that's even worth investing those dollars. Second step only goes to 83. So that's why that ends there. So really happy with the success, especially with all the staffing challenges last year. Probably want to say.
Just a quick follow-up question on, I mean, it's just so awesome that we met both our goals at the elementary and the middle school. Can you remind me where those were embedded in each of those? Was it when?
Oh, um, so we gave, it's like, you know, here's the pasture, but you have to be in these fences, like, so schools got to choose when they did that. Vast majority of our elementaries did it during morning meeting time. We gave them that autonomy. However, I saw that data was, was drastically better at schools that said Tuesday, SEL day, eight, eight to eight-thirty. And so that is now something that we moved over to this year using that data to kind of change our decisions. Instead of being too loose on there, and we kind of found that it didn't always happen.
And we do it during when?
Yep.
And or dean embedded it in classes for the first part of the year and then switched to doing it in when. At Lincoln Park, we do community building on Monday because we are a restorative school. So we do, we use restorative strategies to build community among our students during when. We do second step on Tuesdays. Wednesdays, we spent a lot of time last year looking at reading classes or math, or reading intervention, and we use some IXL time as well. We had an academic day and then we still want to be enjoyable and we have a fun Friday.
Thank you.
We still want to be enjoyed.
So that's how when is structured at Lincoln.
Thank you. And thanks for sharing just how.
Oh, it makes me excited.
The data you're collecting is forming your decisions moving forward in a more strategic way too.
It's been really exciting and a lot of work, but yeah, very proud of that team. This is another that makes me very excited, our restorative practices. You know, I think even from 10 years ago, this has become much more common nomenclature. We continue to work with Lorraine and Paul Nicholson, who we were kind of got contact through, through their work with Lincoln Park Middle School. Absolutely fantastic people. And they're able to provide a lot of these kind of Duluth-specific trainings that we require of them. So all of our RP kind of funding is coming through this aware grant. I think one of the, the biggest achievements we did last year is training all of our behavior decision-makers as well as our support staff in harm circle. And so that is one of the most fantastic ways, instead of doing a five-day suspension, how can we actually fix the root cause of the problem? And so that is a very good tool for all of our, you know, deans and our APs, our assistant principals and our principals to be able to use. And then also our support staff, you know, is this a way that we can keep something at a five instead of it turning into a physical altercation down the road? instead of it keep turning into a physical altercation down the road? And so a ton of research on restorative practices. But to me, it takes a lot of time. But that time is, in vast majority of cases, going to prevent that larger occurrence from happening that we don't want. Again, very relationship-based, which, to me, is definitely the direction our district's moving. No matter what capacity you're in, relationships have to come first. And if they don't, again, we can't expect data or practices to change. We also had an optional training for teachers in August. We had it filled, which I was blown away because last year, many educators told me it was the hardest year of their career. And here they came in August for a three-day training. Again, we have posters and restorative check cards at all sites. We did a restorative check training for all personnel this year. And that was in August. You know, really what our goal is, is wanting to continue to train more and more of our staff in this. You know, I think we have a couple areas that make it hard. One is the time. It takes three days to be harm circle trained well. And so one, the sub-issue of finding them and then paying for those subs. And so right now, through this aware grant, we have, I believe, $70,000 pushed aside just for sub-costs. And so we're hoping that we have that pool filled so that we can continue to train our more, you know, certified teachers and staff. And so this will be an area that we're going to continue to grow on. We have a five-year plan on it, but really hoping that this becomes one of the pillars of delude public schools. Anthony talked a little bit about PBIS and, you know, this has been around for a long time. With these MTSS positions, we're really working on coming through this framework with a PBIS lens, positive behavior interventions and supports. And so these coordinators at each site are working on some of those basic tenets. So what are your, what are your basic expectations, right? Do we have school-wide matrices and what's expected in settings? We're going to be conducting what's called a tiered fidelity inventory for each school. And so that's basically ranking your tiered system. And so every school's going to be required to do that in the next two to three weeks. And that should kind of put into your school improvement plan. And so you're actually going to have to be making a goal in the social, emotional, behavioral realm. And so to me, that's really great. A lot of times you look at achievement data and we forget the other stuff. And so slowly but organically working our way for all of our schools to become PBIS. You have to apply in the winter to get training the following year. And so we're hoping that through kind of this work, getting schools prepared in a slow way to be able to get some culverts through that training in the next two to three years. And again, selfishly, it makes my job way easier. Instead of saying, well, Lowell does this and Lincoln, like you can't ever answer a question because our schools are so varied. And so how can we all be speaking that same language? Probably heard me talk about Project Where a lot. A good chunk of our social, emotional, behavioral kind of supports come through this grant. And so it's a lot of headache and work, but the benefits are gigantic in regards to what it can provide. Again, just for a quick recap, it provides for my colleague Kelly DeBrent's role, where she is our MTSS social, emotional, behavioral coordinator as a district. And so for me, my first year being pretty in isolation on this side is absolutely awesome to have a colleague. And then we also have Todd McGowan, who does tier-two interventions for our four elementaries that do not, aren't able to provide that support due to staffing. And so this would be our Lester Parks, our Lakewoods, our HomeCraft. So giving these kids a trained social worker, clinical social worker to run tier-two with them. And just a really great guy. So happy to have those positions. Some of the things, you know, we've paid for is this RP training. We bought a calming kit for every single elementary classroom this year. And so really our goal is with that is how can we keep kids in the classroom instead of kicking them out? For our secondaries, we invested in alternative seating. Again, the goal with keeping kids in the classroom instead of having to kick them out, providing that space, providing those tools so that, you know, we can get through some of those lower-level problems without having to ask for admin support. We were actually able to pay PBIS teams stipend, which is the first time. I was a lifelonger PBISer at Piedmont. We did that all out of the goodness of our heart. So to be able to actually pay these teams finally for basically creating their school culture is absolutely huge to me, as well as giving them the school fund. And so Kelly, you probably remember, we'd go knocking on doors, asking for money. Now giving these sites some kind of bona fide funds just for building culture, just for building that school climate. Tracking mental health referral data and then continuing to how can we beef up our, our community relationships with that? And then it bought our posters and lanyards for second step and restorative practices. And then provided a lot of professional development and covers sub-costs. So that is a great thing. We're going into year two of that right now. And so we have three more after this year, which I think is very exciting. So some other kind of notables, sorry. You know, continuing with that implicit bias training, I think that's absolutely vital. We did an equity survey assessment of staff last year. And I believe I can't speak to it fully, but of having that kind of process continue. That CPI training and de-escalation. Trauma-informed practices is another area we continue to hit. And then looking at that alternative to suspension rooms in our secondaries. And again, I go back to that family and student handbook. It's not enjoyable to work on, but that is what people are using to suspend kids. And so unless that changes, we can't again expect some of that data to change.
Good. I was just texting to say.
I'm almost there. I have just a few other recommendations.
One second. Chair local, you may want to mute yourself when you came back on your microphone.
Well, I, I think that in Charleston, you're only supposed to be on the internet for like two and a half hours or something, but I'm able to come back in, so yeah.
We have to continue to create stronger ties to our community and having active engagement, even if those conversations are difficult and challenging. I continue to voice this because I think this is the crux of how can we establish and maintain minimal expectations for every school? Doesn't matter if you're Zico. What do we expect that all kids deserve? We have to complete a lot of this MTSS work as a district level as well as at our sites. Continue with second step. Again, their research shows you don't see improvements, dramatic improvements in data until year three. And so we have to continue to have a high fidelity with that. How do we continue to work on the preventative proactive versus the reactive? How can we start putting more of our eggs into that basket? Continuing to offer PBIS trauma-informed and restorative practice, professional development. And then again, continue to build a sustainable alternative to suspension program. Esther's going to go away. Aware is going to go away. So what is our long-term answers to these really large and difficult questions when money is not there? That is, that has yet to be fully realized and discovered, but that is one of our greatest challenges.
Thank you for sharing that. And one of the things I wanted to make some connection then, dots, is the MTSS coordinator positions. As you recall, we presented a plan at the end of last year using some learning recovery dollars, SRO dollars. It was $4 million that was provided to the district to support extended learning or recovery learning, however you want to phrase it. What we use the money for is summer school programming, after-school programming, as well as we took advantage of an option that allowed us to use some of those resources during the school day. As a district, we developed a plan to create these positions that will again provide resources to each building to intentionally work on creating positive learning environments and building climate and culture in the school, all connected to SEL, all connected to our students' desired daily experiences in terms of how we make sure again that they feel connected, belonging and so forth. So I just wanted to make sure you make the connection between some of those resources and other presentations and what Jake shared and what we're trying to accomplish. And last thing, I want to say this to the community. While we are constantly working on things to make improvements, it takes an entire community to meet the needs of all of our students. I ask our community and families to catch our kids doing something positive and acknowledge that. You know, share with us, you know, when they are doing those things. I'm going to create a challenge right now on how do we, you know, something related to catching our kids doing something positive and making that a TikTok challenge or some other kind of challenge for the community. Because we need to start recognizing the positive things that are happening in our community, the good things and the good decisions our students are making each and every day. And it's going to take the entire community to do it. So I want to thank you for the presentation tonight. And I want to thank everyone, to be honest, for you're still awake and you're attentive and you're engaged. And I really appreciate it. It has been a long meeting, so thank you everyone.
I think as well it.
Chair local.
Oh, you didn't need to interrupt superdennymakers. I was just going to share with you too that I'm just turning the camera off because I think that helps with my ability to connect.
Thank you.
Thanks. I was just going to say that I want to say thanks to you and thanks to the leadership of our schools as we have already. I also think it kind of lays the framework for the last item that we're postponing, basically, that we are working as a cohesive system to try and be more responsive in so many ways. And my brain has turned to mush. I need a hamburger right about now. But what I was going to say is that with the, with the start of the school year and with changes in administration and structure here as well as significant changes in the administration and structure in the police department, there are a couple of things that we are working on that we want to make, because we want to make sure, and we are all in agreement about what we want in our SRO contract financially as well as what we want as far as the cultural and relational aspects. There are just a couple of Ts to cross and Is to dot. And we plan on bringing that information forward at a, at a future meeting rather than now as I've shared earlier.
Thank you. For chair, that concludes our agenda.
Thank you all very much.
All right, thank you.
Thanks to our presenters and to our staff that come and share. We're adjourned.